Good evening, with apologies for the delay. The Monday, November 27th, regular meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order, but the clerk, please take their role.
Councilmember Harris.
President.
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns. See you online. Councilmember Saffronin.
Here.
Councilmember Revelle.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hakaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Mayor Biss.
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are none. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza. If I could ask Yoland Wilburn to come up to the podium here. Welcome.
I am very pleased to announce that the Library Board of Trustees has named Yoland Wilburn as their new executive director. Wilburn brings more than a decade of experience working at all levels of public libraries, and she started in the role on November 13th. Ms. Wilburn previously served as the Director of Libraries for the Santa Cruz Public Libraries, overseeing the system's 10 locations, $19 million budget, and a full-time equivalent staff of 110. Ms. Wilburn started her career as a librarian at the Chicago Public Library, where she developed one of the nation's earliest maker labs, the Innovation Lab at the Harold Washington Library. Since then, she has served as the City Librarian in Torrance, California, County Librarian in Nevada, California, California, and Library Manager for the Los Angeles County Public Library. She earned her Master's in Library and Information Science from San Jose State University. For Director Wilburn, the move to Evanston is a homecoming. She was born and raised in Chicago and lived on Evanston's south side. It was her family and community ties that prompted her return. Please join me in welcoming Director Wilburn.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Stowe, Mayor Bliss, council members. I am just so honored to be here this evening for this introduction. Please know that I am looking forward to connecting with all of you and maybe setting a time where I can get to know more about you, the wards that you represent, and how the library can continue to support your wards' goals, as well as our community's collective goals. So, thank you so much, I'm honored to be here.
Before the city manager announcements continue, I just want to welcome Yoland to Evanston. We had a chance to meet this afternoon, it was a great conversation, and I think it's going to be a delight to work with you. And it's such a fun part of the job for us. The library is a treasure, a beloved treasure in the community, and I am really excited to see the direction that you take it. So, welcome aboard, and we're all looking forward to working with you. And before I give the mic back to Luke, I just want to say thank you to Heather. You've served in that interim role for a long time. Serving in an interim role is sometimes tricky, frankly, and you did it so well with such dedication and love for the institution, and we all benefited from that service. So, thank you so much, Heather. Welcome aboard, Yoland, and excited to work with both of you going forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I was also going to thank Heather for her hard work. It was a pleasure working with Heather for over a year in her capacity, so thank you, Heather, so much. Next up, we have some bittersweet announcements here to make. If Deputy City Manager Stonebeck could come up to the podium.
I would like to recognize that after 39 years of service to Evanston, Deputy City Manager Dave Stonebeck's last day is this Friday, December 1st. We'd like to thank Dave for his nearly four decades of service to the city. Dave has served in a variety of roles, including the Utilities Department Director, Public Works Director, and more recently, as Deputy City Manager. Dave played a critical role in securing several wholesale water customers, which will benefit Evanston for many years to come. He is known throughout the Chicago area as a water production expert. Dave also provided crucial leadership and expertise at the Emergency Operations Center during COVID-19 response. During the past couple of years of senior management transitions, Dave has filled a variety of gaps and provided much-needed stability for the organization. I am very grateful for Dave's assistance and support during the past year. Would like to wish Dave a wonderful retirement.
I just want to thank the nine city managers I worked for, all the elected officials, and most importantly, the community members of Evanston for allowing me to work here for the past 39 years. As a young man with a degree in Water Resources Engineering and a few years' experience working for a water, wastewater engineering firm, I was ecstatic to be offered the job of Assistant Superintendent at the water plant. The opportunities that the employment here with the city provided me were amazing. Overseeing the operations of the water plant, and then leading the entire water and sewer divisions as the Utilities Director. Overseeing the construction of the city's $210 million long-range sewer improvement project that has basically eliminated sewage backups into people's basements, it was a huge success. Working as the Public Works Director and leading the talented group of employees and supervisors that do the not sexy work, but the very important work, they get it done great. Working with the City Manager's Office to get new wholesale water customers, being part of the EOC and working closely with all the directors in a unified mission to address the challenges that COVID brought. Making recommendations to the City Council that were approved to develop an affordable water and sewer rate, and declaring the removal of lead service lines as a health benefit so that all community members will be able to have this work completed without the burden of financial difficulties. Finally, when asked to step up to become an interim Deputy City Manager when there was a shortage of employees in the City Manager's Office, I tried my best to mentor directors and managers to assist them in making their careers rewarding and successful and satisfying here at Evanston. So, again, thank you for providing me these opportunities and making my work career a very rewarding experience.
I'd like to just extend my personal thanks, Dave. I mean, I've worked with you in a variety of contexts since I was a state rep in 2011, and I've learned a ton from you throughout that time, but certainly, the lion's share of that learning came after I became mayor. You know, I would just highlight the fact that there's a lot of great things to be said for the city government that we have in place right now. One of those, however, is not an overwhelming wealth of experience at the top. And the role that you've played, particularly as Deputy City Manager, given your experience, your knowledge of the organization, your understanding of how things have operated here for so long, has been just invaluable. Invaluable. In little ways that I didn't even really understand until afterwards, half the time, it's been really, really meaningful. So, I just want to give you a personal and public thank you for all you've done. I know that probably 99-plus percent of what you've done for this organization has been invisible to me, but just the bit that I've seen has been a real game changer. So, thank you so much, and just wishing you and Denise a really wonderful enjoyment of this next chapter. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had the honor of working with Dave for about a quarter of his tenure with the city. First got to know Dave when I started coming to Utilities Commission's meetings to work on community aggregation. One thing led to another, and here I am on City Council. We worked on benchmarking, we worked on a lot of climate action stuff, and I want to give Dave credit for his, you know, early embrace of climate action in a way that many engineers of his vintage have not yet fully embraced. So, thank you, Dave, for your work on CARP. Your first year as an employee with the city was in 1985. You were here a few years before that, but 1985, you came on our payroll. I just, I looked up a few 1985 facts. Our city budget in 1985 was $62 million. So, we won't hold you personally accountable for the sevenfold increase in the intervening 37 years. In 1985, there were no cell phones, there was no internet, there was no email, Windows hadn't even come out yet. It was DOS, and you probably had one of the first computers in the building, I would venture to say. So, life was a lot different back then, and I'm sure you have seen more than almost any city employee currently working at the city of Evanston has seen in your tenure here. You certainly know all there is to know about our infrastructure, our water, our sewer, our roads, our bridges, our broadband, fiber optic network. These are the most fundamental of core government services, and we're losing a wealth of institutional knowledge when Dave retires, which could be a bad thing, but I want to give Dave and City Manager Stowe credit for some really effective succession planning. And I feel like Dave is leaving the department in very good hands and passing the torch to Edgar, and to Luke, and to Darrell. So, I hope you guys are up to the challenge and are ready to step into some pretty big shoes. So, on behalf of current and past members of the Utilities Commission, and current and past members of the City Council, and all the residents of Evanston, thank you for your years of service.
And Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
We got an email comment from Christina Hamilton in support of 74-0-23, email from Felisa Howard for no horse-drawn carriages. And I do have an additional Bruce Doplin, who said he submitted a written comment, but I didn't find it. Yeah, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comments. This evening, we have just north of 23 people have signed up, so we'll have two minutes per public commenter. We begin, as always, with those who signed up on this sheet in person, beginning with Eric Passit, who will be followed by Clyde Macklemore, and then Don Ziegler.
My name is Eric Passit. I'm a resident of the 4th Ward and the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos, and I'm here to speak up, as I did last time, about the budget. And I would hope that we, I wouldn't say table this, but go back and try to bring this down, because as I've said before, you know, everybody, most people in the council have preached affordable housing. However, raising the budget by 40% to 50%, I think it's closer to 40%, is totally contrary to affordable housing. Because, you know, it raises property taxes, fees, everything has to do with affordable housing in Evanston. And I realize that most of the property taxes has nothing to do with the City Council, except for the fact that you guys approved a new school, which never should have been done. It's another $45 million in debt that all of us, you know, cared to take for a long time. And, you know, we could pass this all on in fees instead of property taxes. However, that's about as hindrance to the city as anything. It drives people away from starting new businesses. I go to Chicago to get gas, which is cheaper than Evanston. You go right over the border, cheaper than Evanston. So, you know, every time we add a fee, we add a tax, we just deter more people from doing business in Evanston. So, enough said.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Clyde Macklemore, who will be followed by Don Ziegler, and then Lauren Peters.
Good evening, Evanston City Council. My name is Clyde Macklemore. I'm the Regional Director for Black Lives Matter. I'm over the Midwest and Southern states. I am here to speak against the proposed ordinance HS1. Studies have shown banning flavored tobacco products does not work. Users will obtain them by any means necessary. Studies also show usage is declining over the last decade in adults and teen usage. Now, let me be honest, as I can with you. The ordinance affects the black community. It is discriminatory at its worst. Those who smoke non-methanol can legally buy cigarettes, but those who smoke Newport's or methanol cigarettes cannot. This will create an illegal market. Single cigarettes will be sold on the street for $2 to $5. This will bring unnecessary contact with your law enforcement. The revenue in the neighborhood's stores and gas stations will decline. And the last thing Evanston merchants need in these difficult times is another loss of their revenue. Other communities such as Chicago and Skokie will benefit from the loss here in Evanston. The real concern here is more police will, the real concern here is more police will result, and that's the opportunity for negativity engagement can occur. I hate to be out here because someone was killed by law enforcement for buying single cigarettes. Have we forgot about Eric Gardner, who was killed by strangulation by a New York police officer? He will stop for selling single cigarettes.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Don Ziegler, who will be followed by Lauren Peters, and then Ray Friedman.
Honorable Mayor Biss and members of the council, I am Don Ziegler, Chair of the Evanston Health Advisory Council. I repeat the council's support for the total ban on flavored tobacco products. You've seen the evidence in your packet from the Health Department and health organizations, the recommendations from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and the prestigious Afro-American Tobacco Control Council. However, I want to address some contrary positions stated by Reverend Macklemore and some on the council. Allegedly, the measure will have unintentional consequences that disproportionately criminalize communities of color by creating increased interaction with law enforcement. However, this measure does not deal with possession. It deals solely with sale of tobacco products. Only sellers will be penalized. It has nothing to do with possession by youth or the general public, nor would the ban criminalize addiction or set obstacles to cessation. Some also claim that a more effective way is just to increase funding for prevention and treatment. While these are necessary, they're not sufficient. Stopping access to these tantalizing and addictive products is the missing link which we need to do something about. Several states and municipalities have successfully adopted this measure, but none yet in Illinois. And we can't wait for the FDA to settle this issue. So, I'm asking you, tonight, take the lead. We'll have a healthier Evanston, healthier neighborhoods, and then a healthier Illinois and other communities. We'll see what we do tonight, as they have on Tobacco 21. So, pass the original measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lauren Peters, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Christina Hamilton.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Peters, and I'm here today to thank you again for leading the state of Illinois on an ongoing fight to protect our kids from tobacco. As the Government Relations Director for American Art Association, and as a parent of a 4th grader who attends King Arts I.D.C. daily, the work that our schools and our teachers have to do to combat the use of flavored tobacco. One vice president of a tobacco company was quoted saying, "For a while, it felt as we were operating a Baskin-Robins ice cream store," in reference to the variety of tobacco flavors their company was producing. As I mentioned at the October 23rd meeting, the share of flavored tobacco cigars has more than doubled from 2000 to 2020, from 6.2 billion cigars to 13.2 billion. Evanston has continually led the way for our state, first with Tobacco 21, reducing or eliminating the sale for those under the age of 21, and now we have a chance again. Let's show Chicago, Cook County, and the surrounding communities that Evanston continues to put the health of our residents first. Please finish the work that you've started and vote to pass a comprehensive restriction of sale of flavored tobacco. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Christina Hamilton.
Good evening, everyone. Ray Friedman, 2nd Ward. I guess I'd like to continue with last week's public comment, saying that I'm totally disgusted with the lack of transparency on Ryan Field MOU and rezoning. Thank you, Mayor Biss and Jonathan Nusma, for your explanation and reasoning behind your vote last week in favor of Ryan Field rebuilding, which was very inappropriate. Zoning change, along with very sad and misguided MOU claiming this is a great deal for Evanston, we don't agree. Once again, I ask you, what's the meaning of public comment? What were City Council's responses to public comment for Ryan Field, MOU, and rezoning? I'm sure this figured into your decision somewhere. This is common courtesy and responsibility, as well as transparency, to let residents know what's going on in their community. I did not see you, Mayor Biss, at either of the last two Town Hall meetings discussing MOU for Ryan Field. Very surprising, Mayor Biss, because you were promoting Town Hall meetings shortly after you were elected. We need the feedback and the response from you, the elected officials. As a matter of fact, the last two weeks, I've sent two letters, actually three letters, asking City Manager, all of you, City Manager, Mayor Biss, to be part of the two historic Town Hall meetings. Got no response. At the first meeting, only two council members were present, but only one spoke, and the other took notes, and one on Zoom. Then, one week later, with only one day notice, we had a second Town Hall meeting, a very robust meeting, for five hours, with only one council member present and one on Zoom call. Thank you, Devon Reed and Bobby Burns, for hosting. The second Town Hall was at City Hall. We'd like to hear and see the recording of that Town Hall meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christina Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor Biss and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Christina Hamilton. I am the Illinois Advocacy Director for the American Lung Association. I stand here in support of the ordinance to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products. I am a lobbyist for the American Lung Association, but this issue is also personal to me. I grew up with a father and a grandmother who smoked methanol cigarettes for a combined 65 years. Thankfully, both of them were able to quit, but unfortunately, my grandmother does have a number of tobacco-related illnesses that she still suffers with to this day and still struggles with her addiction. In addition to that, I am going to read an excerpt from Reverend Dr. William Crowder, Jr. He's a senior pastor at Park Manor Christian Church in Chicago. He recently wrote an LTE in support of the FDA's proposed ban on methanol cigarettes and flavored cigars. "For me, the horrendous impact of methanol cigarettes is most acute when I'm called to the hospital with congregation members to pray for someone suffering from the consequences of smoking methanol cigarettes, which happens more than I'd like to remember. Tobacco use is the number-one cause of preventable death for African-Americans and a major contributor to the three leading causes of death among black Americans: heart disease, cancer, and stroke. Methanol cigarettes are a major reason why tobacco claims 45,000 black lives every year and why 30% of cancer deaths are attributed to smoking. In the 1950s, less than 10% of black smokers smoked menthols; now, 85% do, compared to 29% of white people. This increase results from decades of targeted predatory marketing by tobacco companies, such as free samples in black neighborhoods." And this is me now talking, so the end of the LTE. "I really believe that if Evanston is serious about improving public health, eliminating racial disparities must be a goal. This requires ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including methanol cigarettes and flavored cigars. Thank you."
Thank you very much. This concludes the people who signed up on this sheet to speak in person. We now move, as always, to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Michael Kroll, followed by John Kennedy, and then James Froberg.
My name is Michael Kroll. I'm a resident of 2nd Ward and a regular transit rider. There was a singular piece of infrastructure I would say has the greatest impact on Evanston. It would be the CTA Purple Line. It is the line that the city pretty much gets to call its own, which is a name that reflects it, the Evanston branch. This train line is a big reason why Evanston isn't just in our suburb, but instead an extension of Chicago. Yet, in the last few months, the Purple Line has been in a freefall when it comes to providing a reliable service. While the CTA L as a whole has struggled to meet the moment, only providing an average of 85% of the greatly reduced schedule system-wide, the Purple Line managed to underperform that, regularly providing within the 70th percentile of service, as logged by Rand McFadden of the grassroots commuter stick app. It's not uncommon to see multiple 30- to 50-minute headways between trains on a daily basis. I personally have seen a crowd of over 100 people waiting for the Purple Line at the platform-powered station due to a 40-minute headway, as train after train on the red line kept dropping people off expecting an easy transfer. And our riders have been handed a physical late slip, as if it was in high school, to need proof of why he was late. I've brought up these issues to Councilmember Reed in a virtual open office meeting this month, but it has only gotten worse, in particular, this Thanksgiving weekend. On Thanksgiving, there was a 90-minute headway for outbound service between 3:00 and 4:30. This headway is six times the normal one of 15 minutes. And also, due to it being a holiday, the CTA 201 and PACE 213 buses that run parallel with the line were not operating as alternatives. This only increased an issue the next day with 70-minute headways in the morning, followed by a one, in both directions, and followed by a 130-minute headway for inbound trains between 11:50 and 2:00 p.m. This led to the line providing an abysmal 55% of its schedule. I've personally stopped taking the Purple Line in October due to how unreliable it's becoming. I ask that the city start getting on the CTA to provide a more reliable service, as it has become a laughingstock, and it is making Evanston look bad in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Kennedy, who will be followed by James Froberg, and then Dr. Emmett T. Williams III.
Good evening. I'm John Kennedy, resident of the 3rd Ward. You've gotten a few memos from myself, you've gotten a memo from Luke today at 4:00. Luke did reach out to me. We had several phone calls, we had a meeting, we went over the analysis that I originally provided you. And as a result of that, and a result of the memo today, I've removed 29 items totaling $6.6 million. However, that leaves 65 items still on that list, that total $3.5 million. And together, they show a 200% increase over the actual from 2021-22. 200%. In just 65 items. Now, that's, you know, a rough estimate of reduction. You're looking at about $2 million potential reduction, right there. And many of you have asked me, and asked in general the public, where can we cut? These are not staff, these are not salary increases, these are not direct services. These are things like, you know, membership dues, training, and travel, and so on. I also found some discrepancies in the memo today. For example, the memo that was sent at 4:00 talked about postage, and how postage was $45,000 in the city clerk's office, and that was a jump from zero because they were reducing other line items. Well, I went through, from 4:00 to 5:00, all the line items in the budget. I found 14 other departments that had a total of $89,000 in postage. I found zero, that had zero increases in 2024 compared to 2023. So, where is this reduction? This budget is not ready for prime time and shouldn't be put off till another couple of weeks, so we can get to the bottom of this.
The next speaker is James Froberg, who will be followed by Dr. Emmett T. Williams III.
I'm here to continue my opposition to the Ryan Field matters, for all of the reasons that were stated by Ray, and all of the reasons that were stated by all the other Evanston taxpayers, as well as all of my own personal reasons for opposing it, as set forth in numerous statements and emails over the last month. But I'm here today because I oppose Councilmember Reed's revenue-generating recommendations as a burden and detriment to taxpayers. Evanston real estate taxpayers should receive a 50% discount on all existing and future residential parking fees and any implemented residential parking utility fee. The effort, I think, should be made by comments that I heard from various City Council members that an effort is going to be made to attempt to raise funds... that an effort is going to be made to attempt to raise funds through non-taxpayers. All of these fees are probably hitting taxpayers. Evanston residents who register their cars with City Hall should receive seven hours of free parking at all parking metered spaces each week to encourage residents to shop and park while patronizing Evanston businesses. Doesn't make any sense to raise people's parking fees, and then people will go someplace else. They'll go where there's free parking. Evanston should impose a $1,500 per shuttle bus fee on any organization that runs or is permitted to run more than 15 shuttle buses per day on any Evanston public residential or commercial streets. Evanston should oppose a $500 per shuttle bus fee on any organization that runs or is permitted to run more than 15 shuttle buses per day on any Evanston public streets if any shuttle bus sits for more than 15 minutes with its engine idling on any residential or commercial street. This fee should apply to each subsequent 15-minute period. Evanston should impose a $500 fee for shuttle buses on any organization that runs or is permitted to run more than 15 shuttle buses. And in conclusion, I would just like to say that- This is the sound of One Shuttle Bus by Ryan Field on their last home football game. It's just one shuttle bus, and this is the noise that is making-
Thank you very much.
Imagine 100 shuttle buses sitting along a city street-
Thank you very much.
I posted this noise on LinkedIn, so everyone can hear what a shuttle bus-
Thank you very much.
...sounds like in Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes the in-person portion of this evening's pub- No, I'm sorry. I apologize. Dr. Emmett T. Williams III will be our last in-person public commenter.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Bliss and to the council. I'm here to speak as senior pastor of the Springfield Baptist Church, right here in Evanston in Fifth Ward. And I'm speaking against, I'm speaking concerning the ban against the tobacco usage. As we all know life, we all have choices. And we have choice to either use tobacco or menthol usage or not. Me, myself personally, I don't, but I know many who does. And those who does, it is an addiction. And by any means necessary, if we stop it, they're going to still find a way to get it, just like opioids. Those who are addicted, some, they stop to prescribe, doctors stopped prescribing them prescriptions, and they still found a way to get it. My thing is, if it's not killing, if it's not hurting us, if it's a decision that we decide to make, we all have to live with the decisions that we make. The FDA has outlawed disposable flavored vape products that attract our use. There needs to be enforcement of the sale of these illegal products, because they have enticed teens rather than outlawing adult use of products. So my thing is, I'm going to, I don't want it banned. I don't believe it should be banned. I believe that it's a choice that we make, and we should allow everybody to make their choices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. We now move to the online public comment, beginning with Mike Masylko, who will be followed by David Cole and then David Carr.
Okay. It wasn't letting me unmute. I agree with most of the others who spoke in favor of the budget not being ready for a vote on the tax levy. The tax levy vote should be postponed until the next council meeting on December 11th. There are many ideas still out there that aren't included in reducing the budget, reducing the tax levy. John Kennedy had an article in the Roundtable that I forwarded to all of you just before the meeting. You should read that. You should read his list. You should read the memo he sent, or the city manager sent to him. He has many good ideas, as do others. One thing I read about today in the Roundtable, again, Beck Park. We don't need a zip line, and we don't need a water feature at Beck Park. We don't need any work on parks in 2024 if that cuts the budget, but a zip line and a water feature? Evanston doesn't do water features very well, obviously. And why do we need a zip line? These are examples of things that are wasteful and not required, not necessary for quality of life in Evanston. I'd also like somebody to explain the misinformation at the last special council meeting when a vote regarding unused applications were forced, said to be necessary because of unused demolition schedule. This was not true. That was a lie. The very next day, it was learned that there is a three-month moratorium on demolition of the existing building, and they didn't finish their applications to the state. I'd like, somebody needs to explain why that happened and why it was forced to have a vote when it wasn't necessary, and I'd like somebody to explain that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Cole, who will be followed by David Carr and then David Spross. I promise we don't alphabetize these people by first names.
David Cole, you're up and unmuted.
David Cole, I think you just remuted yourself. Let's, I'm going to give it one more chance and then move on. David Cole, are you there? All right, in that case, we'll move ahead with David Carr, followed by David Spross, and then Christopher Hudgens.
Hi. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
You bet.
All right. Good evening. My name's David Carr. I'm speaking to you tonight as president of the Illinois Association of Wholesale Distributors. My message tonight is in opposition of HS1 banning the sale of flavored tobacco products. The association represents the various Illinois convenience store suppliers who distribute the candy, chips, snacks, and tobacco items you see in convenience stores around the state, including the retailers in Evanston. We offer a wealth of knowledge as it relates to business trends and how state and local tobacco regulations impact local businesses. Our members do business outside Illinois, where tobacco flavor bans have taken place, and we can speak firsthand as to how this plays out at the local and regional level. We're disappointed that despite efforts to be part of this conversation around regulation, including some messages and meeting requests, our perspectives have not been engaged on this issue. We're asking you to delay this vote until the wholesale and retail communities have received equal consideration to the anti-tobacco advocates. There are more productive paths forward that do not rely on tried and failed prohibition policies of the past. The proposed total flavor ban will only redistribute business outside the city and create illicit trade that you cannot control. This has been proven in Minneapolis, St. Paul, Duluth, Massachusetts, and other marketplaces around the United States, time and again. If you feel like action is needed today, please move forward with the proposed flavored electronic vapor ban that the National Youth Survey data supports. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Spross, who will be followed by Christopher Hudgens, and then Mary Rosinski.
Okay. Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. My name's David Spross. I'm the executive director of the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, which is a national retail trade association that represents 66,000 retail stores throughout the country, including several in Evanston. This is my third time testifying before the Evanston City Council on this issue. Because there are so many unintended consequences of this ordinance, I've provided different examples each time I've come before you. In the past, I described how our licensed retailers responsibly sell tobacco products in compliance with all state, federal, and local laws. And I've also talked about how tobacco consumers will purchase tobacco products through the black market or simply cross city lines to visit one of the 900 tobacco retailers within the 10 miles of the city limits. Two additional items I just wanted to add. Within the last month, the federal government has released its youth usage data. The headline of the press release says "National Survey Shows Drop Any Cigarette Use Among High School Students." Also, within this report, cigarette and cigar youth usage data remain at historic all-time lows. Secondly, since we're talking about the federal government, the FDA has an application process to review and grant authorization of tobacco products. To date, the FDA has reviewed around 25 million applications of these cigarette and other nicotine products. Additionally, as was mentioned earlier, the FDA is going through the route-making process to ban menthol cigarettes and flavored cigars. I say all this to let you know that the federal government is looking at these issues. So in summary, with FDA taking these actions, youth usage declining at all-time lows, and with the likelihood of illicit trade increasing, NATO asks the city of Evanston not to proceed with the flavored tobacco ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christopher Hudgens, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Rima Khori.
Good evening. Thank you. Chris Hudgens, I serve on the board of the National Huka Community Association. I want to thank those of you on the council who took the time to meet with us. Our request is simple. We're requesting that you exempt Huka from the, and Huka only, from the flavored tobacco ban, and for the following reasons. So Huka is about 25% tobacco. Its heritage goes back to almost 1,000 years, where it began as a flavored product being made with honey and other fruits, and has remained so to this day. But it is an important cultural practice for people from the Middle East, India, Northern Africa, and other areas for almost 1,000 years. And then those folks, when they travel or move to the U.S., they often bring that culture and, or, excuse me, this practice with them as part of their culture as a way of meeting with and sharing discussion with other individuals. Exempting this will not create a youth crisis. There is no youth crisis. A hookah is about a three-foot tall pipe. You need to put water in it, and you need to have hot, fire-hot coals lit to place on top of it to smoke it. You will not go in any school in this country and find a child smoking a hookah. They simply don't have the ability to hide it for 30 minutes to set it up, or the ability to light it. So we're asking for exemption here. In fact, if you exempt Huka, Huka's only sold in tobacco shops or hookah lounges. You don't have any hookah lounges in Evanston. There's only a few tobacco shops. Those shops aren't selling a lot of Huka, and they're not making their money off of Huka. They're making money off of cigarettes and vape. I imagine most of those stores will close if this passes, even if there's an exemption for Huka, because they're not going to be able to survive selling Huka. So why are we advocating for this? Because we feel, and part of the reason why we created this organization, is to protect this important cultural practice for people from these areas, preserve their culture.
Thank you very much.
Don't make me feel under attack. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just want to quickly interrupt public comment to say that as of 6:26 p.m., Councilmember Burns has been participating in the meeting remotely. My apologies for the delay and the recognition, Councilmember Burns. We move on now. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Rima Khori, and then Donovan Griffith.
Hi. This is Mary. I have three things. One is, I felt very deceived about the Northwestern push to vote for that last week, especially when we found out the day after that they didn't need a demo permit. I think that's not being very transparent. I also feel, now this regarding the budget, it's too soon to pass this budget. I think that the capital improvements plan, I've been looking for the updated redline version. I go to the budget page, and it's still the original and something from October. But, so I'm going to address those issues, because I don't know what was actually cut out. But the capital improvements budget is got so many numbers there that have no estimates. For example, the Civic Center at $1,005,000, we didn't vote for. I think that came out, someone told me. The dog parks, two dog parks at $800,000, when the year before, one dog park was estimated at $65,000. So that's another $600,000. There's, the Fleetwood Jordane studies, we're not building a new Fleetwood Jordane now. We're not moving. We're not relocating. We haven't even talked about it. They totaled up close to $1 million. And so I think the public deserves to know what are the estimates behind these numbers. And it only takes 1% of a trim of this budget to keep the levy flat. So I would really encourage you not to rush this through like we've been doing so many other things, but get all the numbers right, and then get on the website the correct redline budget that we're all talking about. And regarding just taxing people more, penalizing more, giving, give people incentives to come downtown. Don't make it punitive. And then we'll have that beneficial effect of having more sales tax. So I would say, let's try to be a friendly, welcoming city. So that's all I wanted to say, is please don't pass it tonight, and get a budget out there that we can go to the budget page and have exactly the numbers that you all are talking about. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rima Khori, who will be followed by Donovan Griffith, and then Jeff Boerini.
Hello. My name is Rima Khori. I'm one of the founding members of the National Huka Community Association, which was founded to protect and preserve the rich cultural tradition of Huka. Many people do not know what Huka is. Hookas are a thousand-year cultural tradition practiced by Middle Easterners, Persians, Turks, Indians, North Africans. This is something that is part and parcel of a cultural tradition that has been practiced. It's a bonding experience when people come together, especially for Muslims who do not drink. This is how people share their time together, and it's a social engagement thing. People also don't realize that hookas are very large. A traditional hookah is around three feet tall, which is very hard to conceal in your backpack or your pocket. You can't set it up easily and smoke it in the bathroom at school. They take about 20 minutes to set up. There's 10 parts and components, all of which usually cost $200 plus, so it's very cost prohibitive, which is the reason why the FDA and the CDC have stated that Huka is just not a problem with youth. Its cumbersome nature, even though it's a inherently flavored tobacco product, which it always has been for centuries, it's made with molasses. In fact, in Arabic, they call it masal, means with honey. So it always imparted a characterizing flavor, and it's very unique and different. And in a time now where, you know, there might be other concerns with youth access and usage, that is not the case with Huka. The number on a national level is somewhere around 1% of high schoolers, and that number has been dropping over the years. So it's just simply not a problem. I mean, this feels punitive, especially in a time when we're so focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion, to indiscriminately eliminate such a rich cultural tradition-
Thank you very much.
...because it's being conflated with other issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I believe that Donovan Griffith is not in the Zoom, so we'll skip past him and move on to Jeff Boerini, who is followed by Noah Steinberg, and then Tricia Connolly.
Good evening. Want to say something about budget tonight, and specifically the budget surplus. We've heard that city management is projecting an approximately $30 million budget surplus this year, and that is on top of several years of similar surpluses, so that we now sit on about $150 million of cash above and beyond our reserves. It's also likely that somewhere in the budget that you're considering tonight is another $30 million that's baked in there for surplus, and I encourage you to root that out. But anyway, there is no need to raise taxes. There is no need to bring in additional money. There's no need to consider the long list of increases in fees for licenses and permits. Just because they're charging more elsewhere is no reason that we should be taking that money from residents for these small costs. And hitting residents, particularly low-income residents, is what these fees do the most. We talk a lot about, you know, increasing the affordability of living in Evanston. I don't think raising these fees helps at all. It feels like we're nickel-and-diming our residents to find, you know, money on the couch here. So please don't raise taxes, and let's not raise them until it's necessary. At that time, we can consider it, but we're good for this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Noah Steinberg, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Sorry, it looks like Noah Steinberg may also not be in the Zoom at this time, so we'll move ahead with Tricia- move ahead with Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Josh Sharp.
Hello, I'm Tricia Connolly. I live in the Second Ward, and I'm here tonight to speak regarding the budget. I feel that this process is broken. I feel that this is a process that can be easily fixed with a few changes. And I do want to stress that I don't think this is something that has occurred within this council. This has been a long historical issue we've had at the city of Evanston. And what I'm speaking about is, you know, we're always faced, it seems, with, you know, a budget being put before us without any scrutiny prior to it getting to the public. And I would like to ask our city manager to draft something in writing telling us exactly what the process is with the budget before it gets to all of us for discussion. I want to know as a resident and a taxpayer that you've sat down with each department and started cutting things that is on their wish list before we have to even look at it and consider it. I feel like the residents are faced with doing the work that our staff should be doing here, and it's unacceptable, and it's a waste of our time. And I'm going to ask you to stop and don't vote for this tonight, and come back with something in much better shape as to Mr. Kennedy's point. Please stop throwing projects into the mix that you are already aware that you can't complete. Why are we even seeing them? That makes no sense. Now, it would be different if you came to us and said, hey, you know, we're looking at really not raising taxes here, but we've got this project coming up that we're really needing to deal with, and this is an idea we have about how to do it. So you all know what to do. Please don't waste our time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Josh Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Biss, and fellow council members for the time this evening to speak with you. I apologize, I'm only on audio tonight. I have some issues with video. But a lot of previous speakers have made comments about the flavor ban, and I'm not going to rehash a lot of those tonight. I do want to talk, though, a little bit about the flavor ban and your budget, since we've talked a lot about the budget. Every budget document that I've seen thus far counts this, the revenue from flavored tobacco products still in the budget, as if it's going to exist, when this proposal, I think, actually eliminates a lot of that money. According to your own health department, I think it's in excess of $100,000. I'll cut right to the chase, though. I flew to Evanston on November 2nd for a meeting with Councilperson Reed about this topic. He unfortunately had to cancel the same day. We've asked for that meeting to be rescheduled. We were told by his office that it would be rescheduled, and it thus far has not been. It would be our preference tonight if we were to remove this item from the agenda and talk about it at a later time, especially given that we were promised a meeting about this. And that's how we would like to proceed this evening. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That could, oh, it looks, sorry. So now it looks like we have Donovan Griffith back in the Zoom. Donovan Griffith.
Yes, thank you very much, and I apologize. I'm actually, I am in the Zoom just under my work name of the Illinois Manufacturers' Association. But yes, this is Donovan Griffith. I am Vice President at Government Affairs for the Illinois Manufacturers' Association. We represent nearly 4,000 manufacturing facilities across the state, including Evanston proper. I am here today to talk in opposition to the flavored tobacco ban ordinance. Just real briefly, I think it's important to talk about the importance of the economics that tobacco brings to the state. In the state of Illinois, there's about 6,500 people that are directly employed in the tobacco manufacturing wholesaling, and that, the economic footprint for state and local taxes is about $2.4 billion. I think one of the concerns that we have when looking at this flavored tobacco ban, when we talk about those dollars, is that it's going to force adult customers to drive outside of Evanston to buy their products. And while they're doing that, they're going to buy other products, gasoline, groceries, beverages, and other items that will result in even greater loss of tax dollars than I think is being considered when we're looking at just tobacco. I also like to point out that if they don't do that, the other problem that might create is that it's going to shift these products from these all-abiding retailers to potentially illegal sources and create an illicit market. The tobacco industry and retailers are well-regulated. This could shift those products to an unregulated market that will cause other health concerns and can be potentially harmful to consumers. I'd also point out that the FDA is taking regulatory actions now on flavored tobacco bans, especially when it comes to e-cigarettes. And with the FDA looking into banning menthol and other issues, I don't think that this ordinance is necessary. So I'd ask that folks, please consider not supporting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This now concludes public comment for the evening. We move on now to special orders of business. Councilmember Reed, do you want to make a motion relative to item SP1?
If I may move item SP2 first. I'll move item SP2, discussion of fire service utility fee.
So just hold on one second. So that, just want to make sure, is everyone on council comfortable with swapping the order? Any objections? All right, team, done, go ahead.
I move item SP2, discussion of a fire service utility fee to non-property taxpaying parcels and Evanston owners in Evanston.
One second for discussion.
Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss the fire service slash utility fee to non-property taxpaying owners in Evanston. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Reed.
So we are here today, one, because we have a budget issue, right? And I want to just dig into this for one second. Our structural deficit is Clayton or attached Clayton. What is our structural deficit?
It's $10 million.
$10 million is the structural deficit. So we have to figure out a way to bring down that structural deficit over the next few years. We may not have to figure it out this year, although the sooner we figure it out, the better positioned we are. And for decades, and potentially even a century, folks have been calling for Northwestern to pay their fair share, Northwestern and other large nonprofit institutions in our city to pay their fair share for services that they utilize here in the city of Evanston. And so, you know, we're trying to figure out how to close this structural deficit without putting the burden disproportionately on the shoulders of our residents, and putting, shifting the burden more and more to those who can afford to bear that burden to make sure that our city is the most livable city in America. And so with that, my first question to staff is, is it legal, is this, is this, is the structure of a fire service fee or fire service utility, is that something we have the authority to do as a home rule unit?
Good evening, Mayor Biss, members of City Council, Alex Rogge interim Corporation Council. I was able to look into this briefly, and the municipal code does allow the city of Evanston to fix and charge fees for a technical rescue or for a specialized rescue service. The municipal code doesn't go beyond that, but it does set fees for specialized rescue at $125 per hour per vehicle, $35 per hour per firefighter. And it just goes on to specify that the fire department would have to have a study done at the reimbursement of costs. So it does set that max at a reimbursement of costs. So when this item was discussed to prepare the memo for this evening, it was our recommendation that the fire department conduct a study to see what a reasonable reimbursement of those costs would be, and to set the fee at that limit.
Thank you. So we have the ability legally to do this, and I'll give an example. Maywood, for example, has fire service fees, and they charge based on the service utilized. So if you have a car fire, there's one fee. If there's a building, a structural fire, there's another fee, depending on the size of the building and the intensity of the fire and the resources utilized. And they have all of these fees laid out in their ordinance. And there, Maywood's not alone in this. There are many Illinois cities who have fire service fees. And so this is something we are legally able to do. It's something that residents have been calling for, for a long time. Chief Pollock, you know, I know that you have a slightly different opinion as to approach here that was laid out in the memo.
Sure. So good evening, Mayor Biss, City Council. Thank you. I do hear what you're saying, and I do appreciate the idea of coming up with other ways of finding ways to bring in more income. I fundamentally disagree with charging a fire utility tax because I don't ever want anybody to feel that I'm not going to call 911 because I might get charged. I can't tell you how many times I've been on ambulance calls, or I've been to people's houses with, you know, a chimney flu that wasn't working, and we showed up, and the first thing they say is, or not the first thing they say, some people will say, I don't really need you, I can figure this out, I don't want to get a charge. That is not what we are here for. If you call 911, you should never have to worry about a charge. So fundamentally, I disagree with the idea of charging a fire utility tax. Do I think there's other ways we can go about this? I do. Be happy to discuss those with you, but if we're talking about certain entities within the town, certain amount of calls that we run, as you're proposing, it's not just a major university. It could be churches, it could be the high schools, it could be, it could be multiple entities that are not paying taxes. So I think we can engage in conversations with some of the larger ones that use our services and negotiate possibly a service fee or something at the very beginning of the year, so no one ever has to worry. I think Councilmember Kelly has, she made very good strides with this a couple of years ago, and we were able to get an $800,000 fire engine from Northwestern. And I'm telling you, that fire engine, not just purchasing the engine, but all of the equipment on it, the cardiac monitor, the air packs, the, everything that we need for that engine, they were able to provide funding for that. I feel that the fire tax utility fee, I don't think it's going to bring in the amount of money you'd like to see, and I also feel it'll close the door. If somebody's going to impose a fee on me or somebody, I would have that adverse reaction. Okay, well, if you need a training venue, we're going to charge you for that. I think the fire department and Northwestern work very well together on many avenues. They provide training facility for us. They provide their expertise in their hazmat division. They provide venues for us when we hold seminars. They've made donations to us multiple times. I'm not saying it's perfect, and I'm not saying that the people aren't wrong wanting their fair share. I'm a resident, too. I get that. But I think we have other ways of doing that, and I would hate to close the door. I would hate to impose a fee on any entity. First and foremost, I don't want anyone ever to feel not to call 911. Secondly, I don't want to close the doors on good relationships. So that's, those are my two main reasons as the fire chief.
Thank you. Thank you, and I'd like to respond to that. So, one, you know, the concern about folks getting charged, if I'm on Northwestern's property, and I've been invited to their property, I'm a student, I'm a teacher, and I call 911, I don't think that I would be, one, even aware of these fees, nor concerned if there's an emergency that Northwestern would have to pay a fee for me utilizing the service.
Not to interrupt you, but so you're right. As a student, that might not happen. But if we impose fees, and it starts costing an entity a certain amount of money, and then they, from the higher-ups, talk to whoever's managing buildings or dorm rooms or dorm facilities, and they say, hey, if the fire alarm goes off, I need you to call me first because I want to check this out before we call the fire department, that could lead to so many bad things. I'm not saying you're wrong. I mean, you're right. Most students wouldn't know that. But if we start charging, and the word goes down, it could happen, and I don't want that. I don't ever want a kid or a person to feel if their mattress is on fire that they have to wait to call, ever.
Yeah. And, but we charge folks for ambulance service, correct?
We do.
And are you concerned that folks aren't going, especially if you've just increased the ambulance fees? Are you concerned, do you have the same concern for that?
I'm not, because when we, when we charge and when we bill for an ambulance fee, that gets billed through our third-party vendor to their insurance. If they don't have insurance, if they don't have insurance, and they can't afford the bill, they can make a hardship claim, and we waive them. If their insurance pays and they're an Evanston resident, there's no more fees. If the insurance pays, they're a non-resident, they'll get a remaining bill. And again, if they can't pay that, we work with them, or we waive it. And the same goes for ambulance calls. I've been on plenty of calls where people have turned me away. They said, just, I don't need you, I can't afford an ambulance. And on the job, our captains, our bosses, our officers on the job, they will state, listen, you need help, this one's on me. And we get them to the hospital because that is our first priority.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And you mentioned there that it's charged to insurance, and that if, one, I don't believe Northwestern could make a hardship claim. And two, I'm sure Northwestern has insurance, just like any other large institution. And when I look at the ordinance in Maywood, similar to the way our ambulance fees are charged, it goes to the insurance company first. Have you seen any structures where it is charged to the insurance?
For like a...
For fire service.
So as we, as this came up a couple of weeks ago, we've been meeting at the fire department on, first of all, how we would even do this. So if we get toned out and we go to an automatic fire alarm to Northwestern, and by the time we get there, we determine that it's a false alarm, we just sent our vehicles there, they stopped for, I don't know, 15 minutes for us to check the alarm out, and then we're going to impose whatever the dollar amount bill would be. Are we billing them? Or how do we do that? What's our, what's our plan with that? So I'm not asking you the question, it's a rhetorical question. It's like, these are things that we have to figure out, how we would do that, how we would collect on that, and who we're billing. Are we billing? I don't know how that looks. I'll be very honest.
Thank you. Yeah. You know, and I know it's a rhetorical question, but I think it would work very similar to how we bill for ambulance services and for other services that we provide. I don't think there'd be a huge list of users that would qualify for this fee. So I think it's pretty easy to know who we're charging, as long as we match up the ownership of the parcel. And again, there are other municipalities that have implemented this. I don't know how much time I have left, but I do have two quick things that I want to
Forty-five seconds.
touch on. And you said, you know, that Northwestern gave $800,000 for a fire truck a few years ago. That has not been the norm, correct? Right? That was, Northwestern, for the last 100, 150 years, how many times have they given us money for fire service?
So they've donated three fire vehicles, including the one you're talking about, in the last, I don't know, 10 years. Back in the 70s, they donated a couple fire engines, which, again, back then were $25,000 apiece. It's not the case anymore, sorry. But it goes, so that's correct. So they've donated three major pieces of apparatus within the last, I'd say, 10 years.
And if I can just close out with this, you said this wouldn't bring in the revenue expected, and so it seems as though, and then you gave examples of Northwestern donating the fire trucks, and Northwestern letting us use their facilities. So is it your opinion that Northwestern is already paying their fair share for fire service?
So what my opinion would be on this is, I feel we can engage in more conversation with Northwestern, and I feel we can come up with something that's going to work for all of us, without putting any type of fear or feeling of any type of person calling 911 for assistance. I do believe, like I said, Councilmember Kelly has opened the door to that, and I think if given direction by city council or my city manager, I'd be happy to engage with conversations. I think we have a wonderful relationship with Northwestern if this is the entity we're talking about.
For example?
Anyway, I, like, I would be happy to do that.
So, you know, I think that we have put this off, and I hope this will be my last comment for now. Hopefully I can come back around. But I... comment for now. Hopefully, I can come back around. But I think we've put this off for long enough. I appreciate that you are seeking to maybe negotiate a fire service agreement with Northwestern. It hasn't been done in the last 150 years that this body has been around, existing with Northwestern. It hasn't been done in your tenure here, it hasn't been done in any of our tenure here. And so, I do think that it's a little too late to engage in negotiations with Northwestern over this. I think, you know, that, you know, great that they do, you know, they engage with us to allow you all to use whatever facilities for fire training, but, you know, I think all of that can be calculated in. And I think we can even structure this in a way that is, that allows for a, essentially, a lump-sum payment at the beginning of the year, so folks aren't charged per, so I think we can, there's a lot of room that we have with this. I think as long as we do the work that Alex, that Council Rugby has suggested around determining what the cost per, you know, service is, I think then we can go to Northwestern, even within the confines of this ordinance, and draft into the ordinance that there is, you know, a prepayment that can happen, which will waive, or we can cap fees at a certain amount. I included that in my memo to staff that we can cap it at a certain dollar amount. And I think all of those are available to us within this ordinance, within our Home Rule authority to implement an ordinance. And I would encourage us to move forward with an ordinance, and work with Northwestern, other large users, to craft this ordinance. But I think the time has come and passed for us to negotiate, because I don't think
If I may.
I don't think, yeah, I'll wrap up here. I don't think Northwestern is looking to negotiate with us in a meaningful way. And if you don't think that this would bring in the 300, you know, or so, to $400,000 in revenue that I've estimated for this, and you think it would bring in less than that, then why the heck would Northwestern give us any more than, you know, what we could get through the ordinance, or what they believe in what you've just shared that they owe us?
Sure. So, if, can I respond? So, if I may, Councilmember Reed, as you stated, no one's, no one has done anything until now, and time has come and passed. Well, in my position, I don't think it's right for me to go outside of my lane, and go beyond the city manager, or the elected officials, to engage with those conversations. I think Councilmember Kelly has opened the door to that. And I think if given the opportunity, or given the chance, working with folks like you, who have these ideas and these ways of doing this, I, I do think we can get somewhere with Northwestern. I think we can make a lot of headway. And it's not just about, they haven't given us, or why would they give us more money. I believe that once you do something like this, you close the door to every other opportunity that might be out there. And that's just my opinion. I'm just the Fire Chief, but I'm happy to engage with conversations. I would ask to give it some time. I understand there's a budget shortfall. I don't think that should be on the back of the Fire Department. I'm sorry. I would be happy to engage in conversations, and if they don't work, can we revisit this in a year from now? But let me at least try.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Nusma.
Thank you. So, I fully agree with Chief Polup. I don't think we should be collecting via service calls. I think this is, this fits into a much larger, comprehensive discussion, and quite frankly, that ball is already in motion. I think that, you know, it's just too piecemeal this approach. I think we do need to sit down in a collaborative, voluntary way. You know, I did propose last year, put a referral to begin that discussion with all of the largest tax-exempt entities. Again, in a collaborative, voluntary motion, it passed out of finance and budget. I look forward to bringing, I've asked that be put on the agenda in January. And I think that's really the way to proceed with, you know, folks sitting at the table, again, in a very voluntary, collaborative way, that we decide together, as they've done in hundreds of cities across this nation, to come up with, you know, what we agree upon is an appropriate formula, potentially. We'll see how that goes. I think Chief Polup mentioned in his memo, some of the universities, like Champaign, since the 1990s, just, you know, donates a certain amount annually, again, for the last 30 years, and many other cities in Illinois, Northern Illinois, Illinois State University. I think that's really the approach. So, I look forward to that discussion in January.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll weigh in here, and join Chief Polup in walking through the door that Councilmember Kelly has opened. I think that's the best approach to leverage our relationship, our increasingly productive and collaborative relationship with Northwestern, and let's see if we can negotiate a fire service agreement. This was an idea on the table when I was talking with Northwestern about the memorandum of understanding that was part of the stadium package. It did not make the final cut, so I will interpret that as leaving the door open for additional discussions along these lines. And as part of that discussion, you had provided some numbers about how much it costs to provide fire service to the university. It was about $860,000 a year in direct costs to, you know, to respond to emergencies as the calls came in. I'm rounding that up to a million, to include some overhead costs. I don't know what the exact numbers would be, but somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah. I would really like to define those a little bit more for you. I did share a document with all of you that is kind of projecting where we would be at the end of this year. We can absolutely get back to that, look at that, revamp our numbers a little bit, to make sure that is the most accurate number I can give you. Yeah. And I would, I do feel that we have a very good, the Fire Department, for sure, has a very good relationship with Northwestern. And I think, I don't think, I'm pretty sure we can get somewhere.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Saffron.
Thank you. So, I did like the idea that you mentioned, the churches, other schools. Northwestern isn't the only game in town, and I do think we need to have a conversation where we all sit down with our non-for-profits and talk about, or non-property tax-paying, to say, everybody has to carry their weight. So, I don't want, I know Northwestern is a hot-button topic in Evanston, but it's everybody. Everybody has to do their share, and have everyone at that table. For me, is the most appropriate way to do that. So, I do agree with our chief at this time. I don't know how to put out fires, so I'm going to let you do your job, and we will help you figure out how to do that. So, thank you.
Be happy to work with any, anybody to do this.
Councilmember Saffron.
Yeah. Chief Hop, do you have a sense, to Councilmember Harris's point, of how many entities would be at the table if we were to do a more comprehensive look at this?
So, that's a, that's a great question. And based on the way this was worded by Councilmember Reed from the last council meeting that this came up, there were certain specs, right? After so many, I have to
I shared a memo with staff. It breaks it down, I think, but yes, there'd be certain thresholds.
Certain call criteria, that those would be the entities that would be getting a fee. I don't think many of the entities, other, there's maybe one other one that might rise to the level of that. So, we would definitely have to look at, if we were to consider a fire utility tax, we would definitely have to come up with an agreement on what that number would be, at a fair number, for everyone to be part of that. Because the number that came up, it would just really kind of be one.
Okay. And do we have an intergovernmental agreement with District 65 and 202, or how does that work? We just show up?
We, they call us, we show. That's the way I
I support that policy.
I do, too. Very much so.
And then, don't want to rehash last week too much, but I disagree with your read, that them saying no is them leaving the door open. Them saying no is them saying no, and then five people up here flushed our leverage. So, that's what happened. And just remember that. Good luck with your discussions. And that's me speaking for me and my residents, not Chief Polup, although you are one of my residents. But I'm not trying to tarnish your relationship, but I think the fact that they said no when they had the stadium in the balance doesn't bode well for the fact that they'll say yes voluntarily. But I challenge them to do it.
I'll accept that challenge.
All right. That concludes discussion on item SP2.
I just wanted, I flipped my light on, just want to make a motion here.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Thank you. So, I'd like to move to table this, to, or I'd like to move to bring this back for action in August of 2024. And so, I think that if we can't get something worked out by August, by the next budget season, then we need to move and enact this by ordinance. And I think that, you know, with that hanging out there, it helps us with negotiations, with whoever we're talking about. And I honestly would have to agree with Councilmember Saffron.
Your time is way up. You can make a motion, but that's, so what is the motion?
I move that we table this, that we bring this back for action at our first meeting, or only meeting in August of 2024.
And what is this exactly?
I'd say that we bring back an ordinance that would instate fire service fees.
Okay. That motion is in order. Just want to say, there's, the word "this" is doing a lot of work here. So, Councilmember Reed moves that the August City Council meeting include an agenda item, which is an ordinance for introduction implementing a fire service/utility fee. Is there a second?
Then I
The motion fails for lack of a second.
Move the motion, and move that we bring this back for discussion in August. And I truly hope you, everybody well on this, but we'll see.
So, Councilmember Reed moves to table item SP2 to the August meeting of the City Council. Is there a second to that motion?
All right.
The motion fails for lack of a second. We now move on with item SP1. Thank you, Chief Polup. Is there a motion relative to item SP1?
I move item SP1, discussion of revenue generating recommendations.
Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss these five revenue generating ideas. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Clayton, can, Clayton, because we've worked on this a lot together, can I have you walk through some of the fees that we voted to discuss today? And I wish they weren't all just jumbled up into one SP. They're not all one item, but, yeah.
Just to be clear, that was exactly the motion that passed two weeks ago. So, staff is implementing precisely what they were asked to implement.
Go ahead.
Clayton Black, Budget Manager, good evening, Mayor, City Clerk, members of the City Council. We did work with Councilmember Reed to make sure that we put forward these recommendations. There are five, maybe six, within the memo for consideration. Three of these, we wrote memos on back in October, and provided those through our Friday Budget Memo packet. The other two, we've done some additional conversations, had some additional conversations, and done some additional research on. So, the first of these is an increase in our residential parking fee. Right now, about 5,000 of our 33,000 vehicles that are registered with the city are required to get a residential annual permit costing $30. So, we proposed, or we compiled the summary of how much, just increasing that current fee would generate in revenues. A $10 increase to that fee brings in $45,000. A doubling of the fee brings in about $135,000. In discussing this further, Councilmember Reed brought up the idea of implementing a residential parking utility fee. That kind of completely is a comprehensive change to how we do residential parking charges in the city. That would bring in substantially more revenue, and I would let you speak to that point, if you'd like.
Yeah. One, I think, you know, I've looked at a number of municipalities. We, you know, for example, Oak Park, I think another that I provided staff was Oswego, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. And, you know, and those are just two examples. There are many others. But, you know, you go on particularly Oswego's website, and you look at parking, and it's under services, right? Parking is a service that is provided by the city. And it is the, I can't think of another service, maybe other than fire and police, that is more heavily subsidized by taxpayers than parking. You know, we say that we want to make Evanston friendly for folks, and the way that we discuss making Evanston friendly is by giving away free parking. To me, making Evanston friendly for families is to make sure folks have housing. I prioritize housing over parking. And we don't subsidize housing anywhere near to the degree that we subsidize parking. And we have to look at the foregoing of fees on parking as a subsidy. And so, you know, in Oak Park, in Oswego, they ban parking on their streets overnight. You may not park on their streets overnight unless you have a residential parking permit. And those permits are quite expensive. They're several hundred dollars. You know, I think Oak Parks is $500 plus, Oswego, same thing. It's, you know, $500 plus as well, I believe. And, you know, and so, you know, we have, in my ward, a lot of my ward is within a parking district already, and that's because we're a dense ward, and we're a lower-income ward. And that tends, those density and lower-income, unfortunately, tend to have a correlation with each other. And so, folks saying that this is, particularly the parking fees, is a tax on low-income folks. Well, low-income folks are essentially already paying it, but we're the only ones having to pay for it, and we're the only ones having to pay for the, you know, the luxury of parking on city streets. And so, I would encourage us to certainly, you know, now move forward with an increase in the general, in the general residential parking permit, but also, over the next year, to explore setting up a parking utility, similar to Oswego, similar to Oak Park, to ensure that we are actually capturing the cost of providing parking to folks. And I would say, until we're subsidizing housing at the rate that we're subsidizing parking, we just need to get our priorities in order. So, I'd like to kind of break these up, because I don't want to have a discussion on these, and then we discussed it, and then it goes nowhere. And so, I don't know what, Mayor Biss, I'll maybe ask you as a point of information, what you think the process for, you know, and also, this limits the discussion on these, because they're all in one, and so you can't really discuss each one in the depth that they need to be. But what would your suggestion be on getting these out of the pile?
My recommendation would be to allow other council members, because obviously, we know your position on these, since you brought them forward, but I would recommend allowing other council members to speak up specifically on things that they're supportive of, or enthusiastic about, trying to move forward with. And we can see through that process if there's coalescing around any of these ideas.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, if you, without objection, if we can kind of take these one by one, I get they're all in one SP, but if we can look at them as separate items, and if there is an objection as far as the time is concerned, I'd like us to look at each of these as essentially a separate item. So, I guess we'll start with the parking fees, with the residential parking permit increase. There are, you know, three options in front of us, $10 increase, what I really think should happen, which is a doubling, if we want to keep pace with, you know, where we should be, and in some cases, inflation. And then also, there is the parking utility, which I think would help with a whole host of issues citywide.
I mean, I'm happy to call on people as they, as they turn on their lights. I don't know that they're going to want to go in the order that you're prescribing. So, why don't we let people speak, and see where that takes us, and then we'll have, if that is not conclusive, then we can try a different approach. Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll weigh in on the parking issue, and then I have thoughts on the other items as well, but I think it makes sense to maybe take these one by one. So, specific to parking, actually, before we get started, I just want to thank Councilmember Reed for allowing us to have this discussion, and looking for ways to increase revenue to the city of Evanston without raising property taxes. So, I appreciate the role you've played in bringing this discussion in front of us. I don't agree with everything here. I don't expect that, I don't imagine you expect that everyone will agree with everything here. But I do take this as a sign that, as a positive sign, that we are looking for additional revenue streams. And I would encourage everyone on this council, including myself, to think creatively about looking for new ways to bring revenue into the city. But anyway, specific to the parking, I'll just keep it really But anyway, specific to the parking, I'll just keep it really short and simple. I would support bumping up the residential parking fee, which is currently $30. It's been there for quite some time. We're due for an increase. Pump it up 5, 10 bucks, I'd be okay with that. I am not okay with, with the parking utility fee or a blanket parking fee. You know, I would regard our wheel tax as something that applies to all vehicle owners in Evanston, whether or not they're parking on the street, and looking at that as a revenue stream. I'm not suggesting at this point increasing it, but, you know, I'm not in favor of a blanket parking fee for the city. So I'll reserve comments on the other ideas.
Councilmember Wynn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When Councilmember Reed first brought this up, I asked our parking director if we had a map of all of our districts, and he sent, he sent me a map. We don't, it's not as easily, easily looked at as you might think, but because I knew that a big portion of the Third Ward has residential parking districts, and I knew that big sections of the Fourth Ward had it as well. And actually, almost all of the Seventh Ward, I'd say most of the First Ward, and all of the areas that border downtown have residential parking districts. So I, I would be willing to go, to raise the parking district fee for $5 or $10 because it hasn't been raised for a while, but I don't think that, I can't possibly support imposing a $400 or $500 per vehicle.
That's not.
Fee on, like Oak Parks.
Not my suggestion.
On, on every vehicle here in Evanston. I think the system we have is a good one, and I don't, and I agree, the wheel tax applies to all vehicles whether or not they are parked on the street.
Just point of personal privilege, I just want to be clear, I don't want media to pick this up, I never suggested a $400 or $500 fee across the board. I just use those as examples of where other municipalities are.
Has drafted the parking utility fee to clarify. So right now, 4,500 of the 33,000 vehicles pay a residential permit fee. Under the provision, as we've discussed, it would essentially expand that to all 33, give or take 1,000 vehicles. So everybody would pay that $30 fee instead of paying a $500 fee.
Thank you.
So this time, no one is requesting to speak further. So without further discussion.
So then with that, sorry.
Okay, so this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back with, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm going to move on.
So we go back with second crack to Councilmember Reed with 45 seconds left.
Thank you. I'm going to move that we increase the, bring back an increase, a $10 increase to the current rate. I would really suggest a doubling, but I hear, what I'm hearing is a $10 increase could pass. So I will move that we increase the residential parking permit by $10 for 2024.
Is there a second?
And point of order, I'm sorry, I, actually, I want to say 15. And the reason I say 15 is because, if I can have parking staff maybe explain an issue that we had with, when we increased the wheel tax a year ago, we did not increase this ordinance. And Luke, if you want to talk a bit about that?
Hello, Luke Tataro, Parking Manager, Mr. Mayor, City Clerk, Councilmembers, which issue we want to talk about?
Yeah, so we increased the wheel tax in 2022.
That's correct.
And the way the ordinance for the residential parking permit is written is it's directly tied, really, the residential parking permit is $115?
No, residential parking is $30.
By code. Mike, I'm sorry, just because Mike and I talked about this.
Yes.
And it's a bit more complex than, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Members of the City, Councilman Mike Rivera, Interim Administrative Services Director. You are correct, ordinance 134-0-18. The way the language reads, the fee of $115 per permit annually is hereby established to cover administrative costs of permits, signs, and related costs of the residential permit parking programs. The fee is to be reduced by the amount of the Evanston vehicle license for those applicants who have purchased said license.
Yeah. And so, and the Evanston vehicle license is our rail tax. I had to go back and confirm that. And so technically, the permit fee should be, because we increased it by $5, $25, correct?
No, because we, because we increased it by, the wheel tax was formerly $85, and we increased it to 90. So this language, this portion of the ordinance was not amended when the section identifying the amount per wheel tax was amended. So this, this particular section should be amended to read $120 per permit minus the fee, which is 30. So it would be 120 minus 30 to be $90 to what we have today. But the language currently reads 115, and if the fee is that we're charging is $30, then the wheel tax would have been 85, and that's a portion that wasn't amended appropriately.
Which I don't know if everyone's following that, right? So, so what we're saying here is that when we increased the wheel tax, it by law technically decreased the parking permit by $5 because we didn't subsequently increase the parking permit at the same time. And so in reality, a $15 increase in real terms now would be, in reality, a $10 increase as far as residents are concerned, who are already paying it.
Correct. And if I may add, this ordinance was amended twice, in 2018 and in 2008, and the language is very vague because it doesn't specifically spell out what the fees are. So if we intend to amend this ordinance, then I would propose that we, you know, oppose exactly what the fees shall be instead of.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Letting it up to interpretation. Because right now, if you don't know what the fees are and you don't know how to interpret it.
Yeah.
As a point of order, if I could jump in here, I would be happy to cosponsor a referral on this, to allow us some time to know what it is we're talking about, because I'll admit you've kind of lost me with the last five minutes of discussion.
All right. I, I mean, we could send this to committee, we don't necessarily need a cosponsorship, but if you're willing to and one other person is willing to commit here publicly, I'm happy to engage in that process.
Sure. I will.
We've got three, maybe.
Well, I have to say, I mean, I did read the code after I got your email, your whatever. And, I mean, it is very confusing.
Yeah.
So it, I would support our trying to get it all clarified.
Okay, so with that, then, there are referrals will be made.
In that case, Councilmember Harris, followed by Revel.
I'll hold.
At this, at this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Newsma with three minutes 15 left.
All right, well, let's just keep moving down the list. So the next one is the increase in the long-term care facility fee. Bottom line, I would support this, raising that either by, you know, at least 50%. Yeah, it's not something that's been done in a while. I believe Director Ogbo has been part of a conversation, and if I could ask Director Ogbo to weigh in on, would there be any potential negative ramifications on the residents of these facilities?
Good day, Members of the City Council, Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. And as you stated, Councilmember Newsma, our long-term care facility fees have not been increased, I would say, in over a decade. So if it's the will of the City Council to increase the fees, that'll be up to you, and at what percentage? I believe the proposal currently is 50% or 100%. We also have to keep in mind that we do have some facilities that pay upwards of 26,000 every year for their license fees, and if we increase it by 100%, that might be an exorbitant fee for our licensed long-term care facility. So these are things that we ought to consider.
Okay, thank you. Again, I think I'd be happy to cosponsor a referral on this one. If procedurally, that makes the most sense to everybody.
Just a point of order, a special order of business, just for clarification, doesn't require to go, to go through the referrals committee process.
Yet, what, if I still have the floor, I'll keep reading through the list then.
Councilmember Newsma has the floor.
I did have a question about the long-term care.
All right, so let's, let's hold on to the long-term care.
Do these in.
All right, so let's, all right, so Councilmember Revel.
So do we annually inspect the long-term care facilities? What, we, we charge a fee, a license fee, and then what, what do they?
What do they get?
What do they get in exchange, exactly? What kind of staff involvement is there?
Absolutely. A number of them, I'll say all of them do have food operations. We conduct their food inspections at these various long-term care facilities. We've hired a consultant who also does inspections in regards to activities and operations within the facility, also to ensure that the staff are at adequate levels, and also that they are trained to provide services at our long-term care facilities. And not only that, the programs that entail rehabilitative services and oral health and hygiene and other aspects of the inspections are involved in it as well. And we also have our albsman program. The individual is designated at our 13 licensed facilities to provide advocacy for the residents who live there and to respond to complaints.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Councilmember Revel, for that question. How often are inspections conducted at our, at each long-term care facility?
Because of the population, when it comes to our food inspections, that's at least three times a year. When it comes to the consultant who does the inspections or investigations to the clinical services and the nursing staff levels and medication and oral health, that's actually once a year. But there are follow-up inspections as well. If during the first inspection, there are some infractions or issues that need to be addressed, then the inspectors will go back for that.
Great, thank you.
This time, no one is asking, oop, sorry, Councilmember Haddadis.
I'll just chime in and say that, given that we don't see there being any trickle-down costs to residents, I'd be in favor of a 50% hike on this fee. I'll just state my feelings about motor fuel tax. I'm a no on that one, and also probably a no on the food delivery charge as well.
At this time, no one's asking to speak for the first or second time, so back for a third time, we go to Councilmember Newsma with two and a half minutes left.
I'm sorry, I had, if, just point of order, I mean, we're talking about what should be several different items. Understand what, you know, that it was all put into one motion, so I get it, but.
I think you made that motion.
I did, because that was kind of the will of the council to take it all up at once as opposed to going through them individually. So, but I do think that our time, without objection, should reset for each of these items.
That would not be my recommendation, but if folks want to reset the time with each discussion, I will, as always, follow the will of the council. What do, what do folks prefer?
I don't think we need that much time for each one of these.
I don't plan to use that much time, but I do, you know, I'm out of time already, and.
Which is an indication that you have been.
Yeah, but it's, we've gone through three items, two or three items.
One and a half. Anyway, I, again, I, as per the rule and just democracy, I'll follow the will of the council. If folks want me to reset the clock or otherwise modify the standard timekeeping, I'm happy to respect the will of the council, of course.
Without objection, because our rule does specifically state that there should be an objection raised.
Well, I raise an objection.
Well, I'm asking you to withhold your objection.
I mean, I'm not kidding around, and I'm speaking in a friendly way, but like, I'm not kidding around, like, there's a budget to discuss, too. I want to make sure that we reserve the bulk of our time for.
This is close to a million dollars of revenue within that budget that is being discussed.
Well, again, if the preference of the council is to remove time limits, that's, of course, the right of the council, and I'm happy to follow along. All right, so we'll continue with Councilmember Newsma with two and a half minutes left.
All right, so 50% increase in the long-term care facility, I would support. Motor fuel tax, I think I would be comfortable increasing that by one cent per gallon. That puts us a little bit ahead of Skokie and Winnetka, but we're still well under Chicago. Chicago is eight cents a gallon. To the gentleman who made the public comment about paying more for gas in Evanston than Chicago, that may be true, but it's not because of Evanston's tax in this case. And I would be particularly supportive of steering that one cent per gallon to our Climate Action Fund, if that is legally possible. I know that state MFT tax has to be reserved for transportation purposes. I'm not sure if the same restriction applies for, for local tax.
Yeah, I think that's a very, very broad constitutional protection of all sort of transportation-related revenues.
In which case, let's make sure it's spent in a way that is meeting our.
Transportation coordinator.
Right, so we can use it for sidewalks. Third-party food delivery surcharge, based on the feedback I have received from fourth ward restaurant owners, I am going to be opposed to that one. And the fleet delivery fee, this one to me is really, really intriguing. I don't think it's ready for prime time as currently, you know, kind of conceptualized, but this, you know, is not the first time we've discussed, like, is there a way we can help Evanston's small businesses who are losing so much revenue to online sales through Amazon and other online retailers? Is there a way we can have an Amazon tax or an online retail tax? And I look at it kind of from that perspective, more so than the delivery itself, just because it seems like it would probably be easier to administer if we, if we approach it from the sales side rather than the delivery side. But this is a conversation I'd be interested in having, but would not be comfortable moving forward with anything at this point. Thanks.
So this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Wynn with three and a half minutes left.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just run through my thoughts on these as well. I am, 50% increase for the long-term care facility, I think, is appropriate. I would also support a one-cent increase in the motor fuel tax, but not more than that. I, I too have talked with the restaurateurs in the Third Ward, and I can't support the third-party food delivery surcharge. I don't think that it will encourage people to go to restaurants versus ordering out. So I don't, and from what I've heard from the restaurant community, they are not in support of that. Like Councilmember Newsma, I'm interested in the creation of a delivery fee, fleet fee, or trying to achieve something regarding this. I understand the direction you're headed in, but I also agree, it's, right now, it's too uncertain for me to support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, the only person requesting to speak is Councilmember Reed. If you can just be quick, given the time is up, and if you, I don't know if you want to kind of sum up based on what you've heard or make a specific request of council, but go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So, one, the fleet fee, you know, we can have a further discussion with legal about this, but, you know, our home rule authority is broad, but it's not unchecked. And anything we have to do has to pass constitutional muster, which means there has to be a solid rationale as to why we are implementing a certain policy. And to me, the fleet delivery fee being implemented, not just on the fact that folks are buying something online, but on the utilization of our. something online, but on the utilization of our infrastructure, on the cars, these big vehicles, driving on our streets, causing traffic disruptions when they double park to make a delivery, the emissions, there is a clear case that I think we can make to back up why we would charge someone these fees. Where online, it, it seems like just the general sales tax would apply. I, I don't know, but I think that's a discussion that we can have. As far as the delivery fees for, I want to be clear that this would, would be on the point of delivery, so it wouldn't be solely on the, this would impact Chicago businesses, this would impact Womet, Winnetka, Skokie. If the food is being delivered to Evanston, the fee would be paid. So this would not disadvantage Evanston businesses in any way. This would create a level playing field for Evanston businesses. And I do think that for certain folks, seeing, you know, just as, come on, folks keep saying that they're going to leave Evanston because they have to pay a 10-cent tax for a bag. You're telling me that if you have to pay a dollar or two to get something, the convenience of having something delivered to you, that you're, those same people who are making those claims aren't going to say, well, maybe I'll just get up and go to this, maybe I'll ride my bike, maybe I'll stop on the way home, or maybe I'll change my behavior in some point. So you, you can't have it both ways. You can't say that the 10-cent tax is going to change all this behavior and make folks go somewhere else, but say a $2 fee is not going to have any impact on someone's behavior. It just doesn't make, from their argument, doesn't make logical sense. And, and so I would encourage us to look at the, at the, the fee for deliveries. And I think, you know, maybe, I'd love to have a conversation with the businesses that you all have spoken to. I'm sure they're not happy about the 15% to 25% that they're getting charged by folks like DoorDash and Uber Eats and all the others, and they would prefer folks. And I, you know, I, I think this is a clear way to nudge some folks to come in and to ensure that, again, those same delivery vehicles, that, that Uber Eats and DoorDash's are causing traffic issues, right? They're, they're also double parking in many cases, they are also utilizing our infrastructure, and they are also harming our local businesses because of what they extract from those local businesses through their excessive fees to, to utilize the service. So I, I would encourage us to not do away with this one now and to really think about it, have conversations with the business community, because I think there's a lot of logic behind this, that, you know, if, if, with, with proper discussion, that even that community could get behind. And so I would move to table the, the, both the fleet fee and separate, so I'll make two separate motions here. One is to move the fleet fee discussion forward. I don't know what an appropriate amount of time is to allow staff and council to consider this, if whether it's three months, six months. I'm not seeing any faces or indications, so I'll just say three months, a quarter, or from staff, maybe, I'm looking at legal, three months, yeah. So I, I'll move the fleet fee discussion to the first meeting in March.
Councilmember Reed moves to, how do we do this?
To create a special order of business.
Councilmember Reed moves to create a special order of business for the first regular city council meeting in March 2024, to include a discussion of the.
A fleet fee.
Of the fleet fee. Is there a second? Councilmember Revel seconds. There are some lights that have, there's some, there's some sort of overhanging lights. Does anyone want to discuss the motion that was just made?
It was before.
Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll on the motion, which again was to create a special order of business for the first regular March meeting in 2024 to discuss the fleet fee?
And to be clear for everyone, the fleet fee means the Amazon fee, just for folks who, yeah. Right, however we choose to, yeah.
Councilmember Harris? No. Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordon? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraigatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
With six voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the special order of business has been created and will be on the March, the first March regular council meeting agenda in 2024. And now your second motion?
Yes, the second motion is regarding the fee for a third-party delivery services. Again, I don't want to make the case again, but I really encourage us to take some time to think about this. I'm willing to meet with.
So what, so what is the motion?
I'm going to say it. I'm willing to meet with anyone in your, in your ward or the community to discuss it. I think that there, the business community could get behind this with further discussion. And so the motion is to create a special order of business for the third-party delivery service fee at the first meeting in March as well.
Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. Okay, we now go back to the regular order of discussion. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So I wanted to go along with everyone else to talk about the yeses and nos and where I stand. So the parking $10 increase, I agree with that. I do question, and I don't know if we have an answer, there's also a fee for guests. Does that maintain the same in that area?
I think that should be increased as well.
Okay, then I won't get behind that, but I can get behind the residential. And then I can get behind the 1% fuel tax. I was really surprised when the resident said they got it cheaper in Chicago, because I'd like to know where that gas station is to get gas. And then I am against the long-term, at least at the 50%, I heard what our health department director said, that, that doubled and it went from 26 to, he said, some people pay up to $26,000 already. So I, I am concerned about that, because there are some facilities that care for people who would not be able to incur that cost, because we know the cost of anything that increases goes to the resident, the people.
Insurance.
If they have it. And if not, Medicare, which is the people that don't have it. I fall into that middle place, ooh, I fall into that middle place. So whenever we're talking about helping, I am too poor to be rich and too rich to be poor. So I keep getting poorer the more I'm helping everybody, because it, it affects, so we have to find a balance for everybody. So I'm, I'm against that, maybe a smaller amount, but against that. The fleet, I was against, and we can look at that later. And then the third-party delivery, I'm against. What I feel like we're doing, and I believe in, if I'm going to tax you, I'm going to give you one tax bill. I'm not going to nickel you, dime you, $10 you here. I want you to know what that fee looks like and not perpetually just keep reaching in our residents' pockets, because the delivery is going to come back to the resident. They're going to fee, they're going to charge the resident somewhere. And I don't know, and I'm not sure about the delivery fleet fee. How do we figure out the per mile? Who's doing that? I, I don't, I don't understand that, and maybe that's just my, I just don't get it. So I just wanted to explain why and where I'm voting and how. Thank you. But I, I, again, I do want to echo what Councilmember Newsma said. Brilliant ideas. I appreciate the work and commitment that has gone into them. But if we're going to charge, if we're going to raise taxes, let's do that one time and people understand it versus incrementally. Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Revel with four minutes, 45 seconds left.
I'm going to run, run through the list as well. I would support a $10 increase in the residential parking permit fee and certainly get our code cleared, cleaned up, so we know what we're talking about. Given the number of staff visits, inspections, et cetera, that need to take place for our long-term care facilities, it does seem that an increase there is warranted. I am sympathetic to Councilmember Harris's concerns about whether 50% increase is too much, but I'm, I'm open to thinking about that. A one-cent increase in the motor fuel tax would be okay. I'm not in support of the food delivery surcharge. And I, you know, there are a lot of questions about how we would structure a delivery fleet fee, but I think that's worth pursuing.
At this time, there is no one else seeking to speak, so we will move ahead to item SP, Councilmember Reed? Item SP 3. Councilmember Reed, she came to make a motion on item SP 3.
Yes, I'll move item SP, just, I'm sorry, point of order on the last issue. Did all of the things, so we, the things that folks agreed on, I don't know if we made a motion or a vote on the motor fuel tax. So I do want to quickly clean up and, and make that to get it, I think there's not full agreement, but consensus, or enough consensus, that we can increase it by one cent. So I will move that, at our next regular meeting, we have a one-cent increase to the motor fuel tax, appear as a special order of business.
Councilmember Reed moves that at the December 11th regular meeting of the Evanston City Council, a one-cent increase in the motor fuel tax appear as a special order of business for introduction. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll on this motion?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordon? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraigatis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries and the special order of business will be on the December 11th agenda. So now, I think.
Point of order, I just want to understand. So where are we with the parking increase? Did we?
The parking increase was handled, if I can editorialize admirably, by, instead of sort of on the fly creating a special order of business up here, there was an agreement made to make a referral, and it's going to go through the regular process.
And I seconded, okay, thank you. I'm so confused. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the vote was six to three. So Councilmember Reed, you were in the process of making a motion, I believe.
Yes, I move item SP 3 ordinance 82023, the 2024 budget ordinance for, it says for action, but I'm moving for discussion at this moment.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm moving it for discussion.
And it's on the, it's on the agenda for action.
I, I plan to table it, but I'm moving it for discussion. Yes.
Is that motion in order?
It was already introduced at our last meeting, so now it's up for action because it's already been introduced. I'd have to look to see if we can make that motion, but I, I just want to specify that it's already been introduced at the last meeting.
A point of order, or information, something.
What?
I think that, point of order, the, yes, it was for introduction at our last meeting, it is listed for action here, but I am able to make a motion to, I could, I could have come out of the gate and said I've moved to table it, or I moved.
Yeah, that you certainly could do.
So I could do any motion with it, that I could, so I'll move it for action with every understanding that I'm going to table it, or that I'm going to move to table it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 82-0-23. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Oh, Councilmember Kelly can go first.
Councilmember Reed followed by Kelly. Councilmember Kelly, do you want to go first?
Sure, it's, this is just an amendment that I brought up before, but I wanted to amend this, you know, many of the cities, surrounding cities, almost every, every single one that I've surveyed have not returned to their pre-COVID staffing levels. We've exceeded ours and are going to exceed it further. I would like to amend it again to remove the position of the council administrative position. Again, this term, we added a new position, our policy coordinator to support council, and I don't want to see us adding yet another position. Positions are expensive, so I would like to amend the budget to, last time, there's a little confusion with the, with my motion being substituted. So anyway, I would like to bring that back to recommend that that position be removed. And I can send an amendment around.
So Councilmember Kelly moves to amend the budget to remove the, what's the title again?
It's called council admin.
The city council admin position. Is there a second? Councilmember Saffordon, seconds. Could you then please send the motion in right now?
So the mo, just point of order, so the motion is to remove a hundred and, what, $1,000 from the budget?
We'll see.
Correct.
Well, that would be the only valid motion.
It's, you know, in, positions are very expensive, and I have other questions about other positions as well.
All right, there's a few people in the queue are, do, does anyone who's in the queue want to speak to this amendment, or can we vote on the amendment and then move on to further discussion?
I want to speak to the amendment.
All right, Councilmember Reed followed by Burns.
First, I, I would say this motion is out of order. The council does not approve, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, council does not approve specific positions, we approve a budget. Is, is that understanding correct of municipal finance? We don't have a position control ordinance or a requirement here, we, we just approved the dollar amount.
Correct, yes.
So this would need to be a dollar amount.
I, I would agree that the amendment is not written in the way that I would have recommended it be written. I'm going to continue to call it in order, I would recommend that we take a vote, I think it's relatively clear what the outcome of the vote will be, which I think you'll be satisfied with, and I think going through that quickly can then allow discussion on the items which may not be resolved. Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, just wanted to remind everybody that while, I, I think the confusion was because it was a substitute motion, Councilmember Kelly ended up voting on it and didn't mean to, but I don't want that to confuse the folks that supported this. This is still the same consideration. We discussed this in last year's budget, and we're able to move forward with a temporary kind of works be, a solution, which serves the five council members well that have used it. The intention was always to have, bring on a full-time position in this year's budget, which is what is being worked on currently. I know Councilmember Revel, you said you were a reluctant, yes, the last time. I really employ you to be a reluctant yes today if you need to. These, this position, position is, is, is critical to the work that we do here in the city. And I, I, I just want to, it, it's, you know, we just need to, to, to move this forward and continue with, with a level of certainty, too, is, we, we talk a lot about, you know, when we, we've gone through a lot of different iterations of city management and other positions about bringing stability to the city. This is something that we worked on together, we voted to do with all intention that we would hire somebody on full-time, and the waffling and going back and forth is not what's going to bring stability to the city. So again, I expected from some council members, but I would, would appreciate if the, the council members who supported works be and supported this the last time continue to. Thank you.
Point of information, point of order, just also for clarity, this amendment would not impact the works be contract, is, from what I'm reading here. Is that your understanding?
That's correct. Would the clerk please take the roll? Would the clerk please take the roll on Councilmember Kelly's amendment to the budget?
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Sufferden? Councilmember Revel? Oh, no. Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Haddad Gaddis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
With two voting in favor and seven voting against, the motion does not carry and the budget is not amended. Councilmember Revel?
So we just had a little question here. At the last meeting, we discussed the budget. Didn't we eliminate the works be $70,000?
We came to a middle ground that was-
Mr. Desai?
Yes, I mean, I just want to, like, that's what we have covered. I think if you give us the time, we can just go through three or four slides with the main items for the council direction.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and, and Councilmember Revel will still have the floor when you're, okay. And then, okay, but yeah, please go ahead with the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the budget calendar, very short, November 27th. We are right there, anticipated budget adoption date. Move forward right here. Original budget of $449 million. Vacancy rate increased to 4%, so that is $1.8 million reduction in the expenses. Again, subject to the council approval here. Reduced CIP spending, I think that's what we got based on the LaRas presentation. And so the amount, exact amount is around 13.7 million. Phase city council admin, 70,000. That's the works be which we are taking out. And then liability or workers' comp premium, I think the item is on council agenda. It's on APW two, which is our general liability insurance and workers' comp. And we just got the quote last week and they were a little higher than that. So we added that in the budget to reflect the actual cost of our insurance premium. So the revised budget is $433.4 million. Next slide is general fund revise kind of, which is the main fund. Revenues are at 133 billion, expense at 143 billion, with the deficit of 10 million. And obviously, yeah, I mean, I just want to remind everyone, council and the residents, that in our proposed budget, we had covered the deficit with 10.3 million by using the general fund reserves. So that's the kind of important reminder. 3.7 million in savings from 4% vacancy, again, subject to the city council approval. And then 1.9 million in increase to the property tax levy, which has come down after we have bumped up the vacancy to 4%. The next year, what's up there? The big items, 3% wage increase costing around 2.6 million on the top of this 12 million, the big increases we had this year. And then there will be a 3% wage increase. Finance and Budget Committee approved the transfer of 1.9 million to fleet fund and 3 million to insurance. I think I have discussed this at the Finance Budget Committee many times, right here too. Both are carrying the negative balance, particularly the insurance fund for many years. And it comes up in our audit report. It's been flagged by sometimes in my discussion with the rating agency, having, so finally, yeah, to kind of make that hole. And the, particularly the fleet has suffered in the last couple of years because of the inflation in terms of parts, the labor, material, all those. So, and, and I'm, yeah, so happy for that. So we will make up that hole. So roughly 5 million would be used from the general fund reserve for this year. And the last item is, I think, requested 400,000 increase in the CMO contingency for the community responder program. This is the revised number. How does it look? Some of the items, you see that we are still showing the use of reserves of 10.280, so 10.2 million dollar. So, yeah, the reserves would go down and that's how we could balance. Net property tax levy is only now 1.8, came down roughly half, you know, because of the vacancy. And in the operating expenses, you could see that vacancy adjustment of 3.7 million dollar, which is equivalent to like 4% of the vacancy. Going to the next slide. This is the, yeah, kind of revised numbers in the tax levy. General fund tax levy originally came down to the half to 1.8 million. Human service fund and general assistance, kind of a wash. Library fund, I think 678, their board approved it. And I think we got a legal clarification that they have the final say. So obviously, that would stay there. Debt service has gone down for the city. Library is a little up, but still negative. So the net levies are 2.5 million, which equates to around four and a half percent increase in our tax levy. This is, we just put the kind of summary of the Northwestern, which happened last week. 10 to 11 million dollar in potential permit revenues. Obviously, we would have the legal plan review and building inspection expenses. We don't know. And obviously, $1 million a year lost revenue while they build the stadium in terms of athletic tax is the biggest one, along with the hotel, motel, parking, fuel and liquor tax and others. And then we have the public benefit package, good neighbor fund, some of those money already committed for affordable housing and sustainability. The other one and a half million is kind of unrestricted money where the city council can make the, yeah, take the appropriate steps or make the decision and kind of elevate some burden on the, over existing funds, workforce development and others. And then, yeah, once it's around 26, guaranteed after the stadium's there, 2.5 million in liquor amusement tax revenue. Obviously, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to be pessimistic, but yes, we have to, as a council, be kind of mindful of the fact that in case there are lawsuits and we kind of have this, some kind of restraining order injection. And if we don't have a permit revenue while we spend annual legal fees and whatnot. And if the stadium is already demolished, we have no athletic tax revenue, all that. So it's just for the council to consider that fact in the mind too. And that's it, right? I think, Clayton? Yeah, so those are the kind of a few big items where we want the councils kind of, you know, take action on.
Councilmember Haddad Gaddis?
Well, Mr. Desai, thanks for showing that last slide. Basically answered my question. Spoke earlier today with Director Flax. And there's also, so the 10 to million, 10 to 11 million dollar in permit revenues, that does not include electric and plumbing? Do we have any rough estimates into, because I know that's a much harder number to come up with, but do we have some potential numbers for what that would look like?
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Luke's and city council members. Unfortunately, we really don't have any way, we don't have anywhere near the kind of information to get any kind of substantive numbers on that. It's not going to be a magnitude that's going to be necessarily millions over that.
Okay, thank you. At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first ti, oop, Councilmember Sufferden?
Thank you. So, and I don't know if this is an appropriate question for the mayor or Luke or Hattas, but the $3 million or the million and a half that's unallocated, I mean, does that replace existing spending that's in the budget? Or would that be used to create new workforce development programming, racial equity programming and revitalization of downtown?
No, I'll speak to that. The, the one and a half million unallocated Good Neighbor Fund money is literally just that unallocated.
When it comes to allocation time, is that a joint decision with the mayor and the president in Northwestern? Or how is it?
No, I would say that in the, to the clear benefit of the city of Evanston, as well as implementation of sound public policy, albeit perhaps to the personal detriment of the mayor. What we've done, which actually we didn't spend a lot of time talking about, but is a pretty significant change, is moved the Good Neighbor Fund from like, oh, hey, the mayor and the president kind of work it out as a handshake agreement and everybody else has to say, that's great, to really discretionary funding for the city to determine how it's spent. And so it's, you know, there's, there's some vague language in the MOU that we can ask Ms. Ruggie to, to read about how it's in furtherance of objectives that are aligned with the university's mission or something. But it's no longer the case that our hands are tied in the way that they historically have been with the Good Neighbor Fund.
Okay, so I guess rephrase it a different way. If I was going to ask for a commitment to use it to fund existing programs, who do I ask to make that commitment? Council, you, Luke, or, I mean, like, how do I get that in the world and in front of the decision maker?
The people up on this dais?
Okay. Well, I would ask, it's not a formal motion, but I mean, in light of what we're doing and how we're trying to close a gap that we commit to using this for replacement of existing budgeted items. Because I think starting anything new with it this year is inappropriate.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with four and a quarter minutes left.
Yeah, I would agree to use that to reduce our levy for 2024, right? To use that 1.5, is that the amount that's, okay. So are these, these aren't available, right, in our packet tonight? These slides?
The slides are on the city agenda.
They're where?
On the website, yeah, city website, where you see-
On the website, but not in our packet?
City council agenda, right there, we have posted this presentation. Where you find the agenda and packet for the city council.
In the agenda?
No, it's on the same webpage where the agenda can be found.
Okay.
How, how should it be labeled?
It says 2024 budget, yeah.
Oh, refresh. I'm refreshed. Doesn't show up for me. Okay, it doesn't show up for me yet, but-
I mean, I refreshed it and it worked, yeah, so I don't know.
I know, it's not on mine, but, okay, all right, great. So hopefully it'll be up. All right, that's all. I just had for now that question, but I support Councilmember Sufferden's motion to use it to reduce her levy.
Again, no one is asking to, you know, it was just a recommendation. Again, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with 4:40 left.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and, that was on my list. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion and it seems like hopefully it should be support. I, I'm going to move that we take the unallocated 1.5 million dollars and use that to offset the need to increase property taxes this year.
Second. So Councilmember Reed moves that the property tax levy be reduced by 1.5 million dollars and that the revenue source to fund that be the unallocated portion of the Good Neighbor Fund. Councilmember Haddad Gaddis, seconds. Before we move forward, can you please put that motion in writing?
And maybe this, actually, this motion might be out of order for this particular item, because that would, I guess, be for us before the tax levy, reducing the tax levy, but-
I think that's right.
Yeah.
That's right. So we can, you can withdraw the motion for now.
Yes, so I, but it would be reflected here. It still would be reflected in our budget. So maybe from the budget team, can I get some clarification?
I mean, the budget includes the revenues and expense. Obviously, we'll have to change the property tax revenue number, reduce it and put this one and a half million dollar as a revenue.
And also change- Right, right, you'd, exactly, you'd replace the, you'd decrease the property tax revenue. Okay, so then I, I, I will say, we, it's not a hard and fast rule that everything has to be put in writing. I think this is, it's not changing text of a language. It's a pretty clear movement of funds, unless someone is unclear, but we, we reduce the, the-
I'm going to hold firm on this. I think that we, we play with fire when we pass amendments. And again, I respect that you're going to move that this be tabled. I think that motion very well may pass, but there's a chance this is final action on the city budget.
Yep, yep.
I'm interested in making sure we get it right.
Yes, if we hold for a second, then I will send it. And then, so I, I sent that over. I do have, I guess the motion's on the floors, but I do have two things after that as well.
Would the clerk please take the roll on the motion made by Councilmember Reed, which is now in writing in front of you?
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddad Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries and the budget is amended. Councilmember Reed still has the floor.
Thank you. And, and, and I'm sorry, I actually probably should have said something to, for my colleagues who voted no. This, this money still allows us potentially some flexibility. It's just, potentially. I, I also would, would like to understand, does the, do we have a projection for the athletic tax? I presume, is it zero in our budget for 2024? I know that's not mentioned there, but-
Yeah, we haven't amended any of the revenues to reflect the closure of the stadium for the year. So it's budgeted at the full amount that it was in the original budget.
Which is 800,000?
Hundred and-
Which even this year, I think we're looking at 400,000. Is that correct?
I need to look at the numbers quick.
Okay.
While you're looking up, is it, is it fair to say that the stadium is not going to be demolished unless the permit fees are paid? Maybe that's a question for Alex.
Might be a question for Sarah. Sorry.
The reason I asked Alex is because, but what I mean is, is it fair to say that the, that we're not going to find ourselves in a situation where the stadium got demolished and then a legal snag forced all of it being rebuilt?
Well, technically, we would not hold a demolition permit for the final approval of the building permits. Normally, they're done in sequence, just the realities.
Right, that's why there's a question for Alex. It's not so much about our process. It's, there's, there are lawsuits out there. There's, there's, you know, reasons that make it perhaps dangerous for us to count on the permitting fee revenue coming in. If, if, if any of those were to come true, would they stop the demolition from happening? In other words, if any of those were to come true, would there still be a football season in Ryan Field in 2024? That's my question.
I'll give you a true lawyer answer. I guess it depends. It depends on a lot of factors, what types of lawsuits are filed, if there's an injunction entered, just what happens. But I would, if I were a betting person, I would bet that if there's no demolition, then there's still a football field, a football stadium or a football season next year, yes.
That wasn't the question. The question is, the question is, would you bet that if there's no permit fee, then there's no demolition?
Well, there's-
Correct.
What came first, the chicken or the egg? There's no demolition without permit fees.
That, that, that's my question, right? Because what I'm, there's, there's the permit fee, there's the tax revenue. And the question I'm asking is, is there a plausible outcome where we get neither? And that sounds kind of ridiculous to a layperson, which is why I'm asking a lawyer. Is- And that sounds kind of ridiculous to a layperson, which is why I'm asking a lawyer, is it plausible that somehow the demolition doesn't happen, or the demolition happens, but the permit doesn't, but the rebuild doesn't happen, and therefore there's no football season there in 2024, and also no permit fee? That's the question I'm asking.
I don't think that that would be plausible.
Sorry to interrupt, I was trying to.
Yeah.
Educate us while killing time. You're welcome, anytime.
There is also a separate permit fee for the demolition, but of course, it's way less than the, it's a pittance compared to the building permit fees.
Which is something we may need to fix in the future, there should be maybe a higher demolition fee for a parcel of that size. I'm not, I'm just saying that, yep.
Signaling mail here, athletic contest taxes are budgeted at 800,000, that includes basketball, so we think about 600,000 of that amount is football.
But, okay, so we think that next year we'll be bringing in about 200,000.
Right, but just the basketball.
With just basketball, so I do think that that is something we need to take into consideration. You know, I, I don't know if folks have more discussion on the budget now, but I would like to move to table the budget. I do think that some of those numbers we need to get cleared out, you know, 600,000 is not an insignificant amount of money. I think that we potentially have room, so, you know, we essentially just voted to reduce the property tax levy by 1.5 million dollars, that leaves what, 400,000? I'm sorry, what was it, 1.? I'm not even seeing where the levy, 1.8 is what it was, so 300?
Total was. Total was 2.5 million.
No, I'm sorry, I thought the levy was 1.8.
Just for the city, portion of the levy was 1.8 million. The city portion of the levy, the library, that is.
Oh, yeah, I'm not talking about the library at all, yeah.
City portion of library, or city portion of property tax levy was 1.8.
Yeah, yeah.
With change now, it's at 300 and.
Right.
392, 793.
And I think we can, we can find a way to even get rid of that 300,000 for this year, and I want to note, it was mentioned earlier that we, you know, we don't want to nickel and dime residents, and, and I get that. But there is a difference between nickeling and diming folks and charging them for a service that they use that is provided by the city, just like any other private business. Again, I want us to think about when we don't charge an appropriate amount for a service that we are providing, we are subsidizing that service. We are, you know, we're taking a loss on the potential revenue, and we're spending the money to provide the service, but taking a loss on the revenue, and so it's a subsidy. And we don't subsidize substantially, you know, Director Ogbo, we've seen it in the past, so we do have some help for subsidy with housing, but we don't subsidize housing in the way that we subsidize parking, for example. And so, you know, I agree that it's nice to, you know, find, you know, just to tax folks once, but if I'm not using a car or I'm not using whatever other service the city provides, that is not, you know, education, right? I think everybody needs to chip in for schools and for other things, but for parking, and I don't have a car, and I need to pay to make sure that someone else can utilize free parking when I can't get a subsidy for housing? It, to me, that's a ridiculous set of priorities, and so to raise property taxes before we raise fees on services that aren't essential, aren't housing, I think is twisted priorities. And especially even thinking about raising fees on conveniences like having food delivered to your house. Jesus Christ, 60 years ago, 50, 20 years ago, that wasn't even thought of, and it's a, it's a new, it's a new, modern convenience that, you know, I'm sure if I had a discussion with the mayor, maybe it might, you know, based on our, the book, How to Focus, it might be leading us to more isolation from each other, that we're having food delivered to our house, and it, you know, may not be the healthiest choice, so again, paying for those kinds of conveniences, I think, are exactly what we should be targeting, rather than targeting the necessity that is housing, and particularly when that tax system is built on a very flawed system that does not encourage, you know, a productive use of land, and so, you know, I'm gonna move to table the budget, so I move to table the budget if there isn't further discussion to our December 11th.
There are three lights on. You're welcome to, a motion to table is debatable, right? No, sorry, okay, there's, there's, there's four lights on at this time.
Well, then, you know, I believe in discussion, so I, if I can flip my light back on and come back around after discussion and move to table it, I will do that.
And I'll just warn you that your time is up, and so when that, when we come back to you, we'll, we'll have time only for the motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna weigh in on what we've already voted on. So I'll say no more on the, on the discussion, or on our decision to reduce the levy this year. I'd like to move forward with this tonight, and there is some uncertainty about exactly how much and exactly when this permit revenue is gonna come in. I'm comfortable moving forward this evening, knowing that these uncertainties are going to exist, and if the numbers are significant enough that it would require a budget amendment at some point next year, that's something we, we certainly could do. But I am also looking forward at some very expensive capital projects next year, which we really haven't even started to discuss in any detail with regards to the Civic Center issue, with regards to our Fire and Police Headquarters, so finding a way to spend this money is not gonna be a problem. So, that's all I have for now, thanks.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to second crack, starting with Councilmember Burns with three minutes and 10 seconds left.
One of my questions answered, I didn't see, I wanted to make sure on the matter that we just voted on that we, that that was only for this year, that we weren't committing the 1.5 out of the Good Neighbor Fund for every subsequent year, but the way it's written, you know, explains itself, it's for this year. There's no date, but it, I can follow it. And also just wanted to use some time to say, I'm glad people are acknowledging the 1.5 million. There was, you know, suggestions when we voted on the, when we voted during our last council meeting that, you know, that affordable housing wasn't a core city service, and, and because of it, you know, what were we getting out of it? And I tried to remind council at least two times, I think it was three, that there was 1.5 unallocated out of the Good Neighbor Fund, and eventually unallocated money that we can use to offset, or to balance our budget in guaranteed tax revenue, starting in 2027 if all goes well. And, and so I'm glad, glad we're finally acknowledging that 1.5 out of the Good Neighbor Fund and going as far as to using it to hopefully eliminate our need to raise property taxes this year. However, we still have to address, Councilmember Reed mentioned this earlier, 10 million structural deficit that we have in our budget. I appreciate John Kennedy and others for providing, you know, input on how we can eliminate our need to increase the levy this year, and really, there was a lot of ways to do it, to me, that, that wasn't the, that's not the most challenging part of this discussion, really what the challenge is, is how do we all, how do we all set a 10 million structural deficit that we have? And we won't do that simply by, you know, by looking at some, you know, explainable increases in our budget from, from one year to the next. And on that note, I did want to allow an opportunity for our city manager to respond publicly to John Kennedy's report, I believe this was something that he published as an op-ed in the Evanston Roundtable, and because it's received, um, because it's received that type of visibility, I think it's important to have you respond to it publicly, so if you can, and then I have one last thing to say after that.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Burns, so I'll be brief, we took a deep dive analysis of Mr. Kennedy's suggestions. I sent an email to the council, and I also sent the same email to Mr. Kennedy shortly afterwards. Basically, 90% or more of his suggested cuts kind of fell into five categories, I would call, so one is basically increases that were requested from department directors or managers. Those budget memos for those increases are posted online, they've actually been posted since October 6th on our main budget page, and so we outline those. Some examples include new spending for IT software, hardware, service agreements which are subject to inflation. As I've mentioned before, CPI since February 2020 is up 19%, we are not immune to inflation and CPI issues. There's also a request from Director Ogbo about improved beach water testing, I think it's a huge step forward for the city and the safety of our folks at the beach and swimmers, but it comes at a cost, right? And so that was another budget memo that we had put forward, there was another budget memo about ranked choice voting and doing education for our community ahead of the 2025 election. Another category were net neutral changes with decreases in other accounts. One of these examples Mr. Kennedy actually brought up tonight was about postage, we have, in previous budgets, we had postage in all kinds of different accounts across the city, and so we did consolidation of USPS postal charges in the city clerk's budget, and so it looks like, if you're looking at Clerk Mendoza's budget, it looks like a dramatic increase in postage, and all we're simply doing is doing a consolidation of that, and I'll let Clayton Plaxx speak a little bit further about John's specific question. Rental of auto fleet accounts and auto replacement accounts, these are just internal fund transfers, and these, it's just a reflection of increased costs for, for fleet services, labor and parts and so forth. Another 849,000 in planned expenses without a budget memo, there are smaller items that we didn't necessarily compel the department director or manager to create a budget memo for, there's things like a 20,000 expense to, we have decades of drawings of city infrastructure that goes back, you know, before computers and digitization, and so there's a 20,000 initiative to take those drawings and digitize them, we think that's the smart thing to do and to properly archive them. Could we postpone that for another year? Potentially, we could, yes, but we think it's the right time to do so and go forward with that. And then the last category is about 160,000 of offsetting revenue, these are things like PEG services and other things where there's a matching grant, and we're just showing that in the budget, the revenue and the expense, so, and I'll let Hattash or Clayton add to any of that if you'd like.
And thank you, yeah, I mean, I think the majesty covered it all those things, one of those is a consolidation where we see that 264,000 person increase in city clerk's budget, yeah, what did he do, you know? Same thing with the 823% where we consolidated telecommunications service for all of our Verizon bills, used to be spread out, lot of time and effort, you know, and if I count and add up those value of all the staff time, so now we put it in purchasing as a one item. And I'm glad the effort, kind of effort he put in, you know, John, but yes, I mean, we've looked at it, categorized under five, yeah, those major categories, and so, yeah, I mean, we are, we're open to like, okay, if we find something, there's some mistakes, yeah, we can just kind of, you know, correct it. But most of them were like, you know, and again, as Majestor said, that some of those things, the memos were already out there when we presented our budget on October 6th.
Yeah, specifically the postage question, my phone was breaking up a bit, so maybe I missed it, but was Clayton gonna come up and speak to that, Manager Stowe? The John Kennedy's question about the postage?
I can get into the weeds on postage and the numbers, and I'll let Clerk Mendoza talk to it, too. If you look at page 103 of the budget document, or, excuse me, 102, you'll see a reduction of 14,500 to postage, and that was in the collector's office. That was reduced and moved to the clerk's budget. An additional 30,000 for Pitney Bowles, which is our our mail service provider, that was previously budgeted in the Facilities Division of the Administrative Services Department and Services and Contracts. So it was a 30,000 amount, that line item is reduced by 30,000. It's lumped into an account that has basically contractual services for many of our building improvements, and somehow postage was, posted services were also being paid in that same account. Inflation has hit those other line items, and so overall, that account is up, but we took it down by 30,000 and moved that amount to the clerk's budget.
And I, a lot of people may not know, but the clerk's office manages citywide mail, so we're in charge of distributing mail internally and also making sure that mail goes out to residents, to organizations, whatever it may be. So, the issue that we were having in our office is that we were managing a service, but we were relying on other departments for billing, for increases, for supplies, for speaking with our Pitney Bowles that manages the machine, it's an actual, it's a mailroom. So it's, this is the, the cost to manage a mailroom and to manage citywide mail to all departments. Loved library, we do books, we, every department, so, and we're actually saving the city, the city money by managing this in the clerk's office, because two staff are doing the job of one person. So before, we used to have a person that managed the room, the mailroom, now we're dividing the work up between two people, so we're saving the city money by doing it in our office.
Councilmember Burns, you said you had one more?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, and, and again, I say that, you know, while I don't think this exercise is, is gonna help us address a 10 million, a 10 million structural deficit in our budget, I do think it's an important exercise to continue to do every year in a sense, so really, I think we should be more proactive at taking a look at this. I talked to Manager Stowe about, about this at one of our biweekly calls. I think all the input that we're getting from the community and also from council members, let's just proactively work these things into our budget next year, and so, for example, you know, Manager Stowe on his own can set some threshold where if a certain line item increases by a certain, you know, percentage or dollar amount, however we want to look at it, that, that, that all of those get budget memos, and I do know that several of these items did have budget memos, it's possible under a new kind of internal policy that, that we could kind of receive additional budget memos on certain increases in advance of these conversations, and, and same thing about the vacancy rate. Like, let's not wait until a future council or even this council brings that up next year, let's just, you know, again, proactively take a look at that as, as, you know, have the city manager's office take a look at that, and, and, you know, come back with, with some recommendations, and and that applies to those two examples, but there are many others that I've been talking to Manager Stowe about. And then, lastly, I just want to say, this, this is similar to the, I think, a point Councilmember Reed was making earlier. One of the things that confuses me about, about conversations is that we almost, it's like people think of the city as if it's, it is this company that is producing this product, and that shareholders and are kind of making off big, like, it's not what's happening. Outside of the 15,000 that council members get up here, plus whatever they use individually, or as a household, I should say, or individually, and health insurance, like, that's it, like, so this is, this is not a company in that sense. And it's, it's a service, it's a non-for-profit in a sense, service provider. If we don't want the services, we don't have to pay for it, and that's why I think we've, and I appreciate John Kennedy and others who have looked at it, like, if, if, if we don't, if we don't want to continue a certain service, then we don't have to pay for it, but if we want to provide a certain service or continue it or expand it, et cetera, then the, the, the city, right, the community, the taxpayers, pay for it, right? That's, that's the only lever that we can pull, and that comes in the form of taxes, fees, fines, et cetera, you know, increase the service charges, et cetera, we're a service provider, and, and so I'd rather be having a conversation about, again, is there a service? And, and so I'd rather be having a conversation about, again, is there a service that, is that people feel we need to eliminate? Is there a service that, that we don't think we need to expand? Is there something that we do, we're doing now that maybe the city shouldn't be doing? I mean, that's the type of conversation we should be having, but not a conversation about nickeling and diming the very people that are responsible for paying for the services. It just, that's not how that works. We're all in this together. So I just want to leave with that note. We'll, we'll ultimately support a table. I, I think we do need more time to, to, to work on, on the budget. And that's all. Thank you.
At this time, there's no one asking to speak for a first time, so we go back for second crack to Councilmember Haddad Katis with four and a half minutes left.
I have a one question for Hitesh, if we can. So looking at the ten to million, ten to eleven million dollars in permit revenues, I always appreciate us being conservative in our revenue projections. How would you feel about potentially putting a number in the 2024 budget and then using that to cover the three hundred thousand dollar shortfall that we currently have for the property tax levy?
I mean, right now, I mean, I cannot be pessimistic and say, yeah, things would go wild and go south and we want, nothing would happen, but, yeah. I mean, as you see, that we are down to like, that three hundred thousand dollar increase on the city side of the property tax levy, and, I mean, out of ten to eleven, it doesn't include the other permits revenue, so. But before I see the number, yeah, I mean, I would just kind of, and again, it's the city council direction, but I would put some kind of amount, which could be on a conservative side as a revenue. It could be a five million, it could be a seven million, eight million. But I want to see that first, and I don't want to balance the budget on that.
Okay. So I guess if we, if I would propose putting a five million dollar placeholder, and then having that reflected in the budget, covering the three hundred thousand, and on also reducing the deficit that, you know, this is a one-time fee, so we have to figure out other ways to cover that. But that gets me to the point where I would be comfortable in two weeks to vote yes on this. I, you know, gladly accept any feedback on that, that placeholder number from my colleagues.
There's still nobody asking to speak for a first crack, so we go back to council, for second cracks to Councilmember Sufferdin with three minutes, fifty-five seconds left.
Thank you. So, and I guess this is a question for all of us, or specifically to the motion maker, but the purpose of the table, what's gonna happen in the next two weeks that would change things? Or, and is it just so that we're not making amendments on the fly on the night we vote on the budget? Or are there expectations of changes to revenues or expenses? Like, what's the objective of holding this for two weeks?
I'd say all of the above.
And then, I guess, what's the expectation of staff between now and the meeting on the eleventh? To change the budget, to take feedback? I mean, we're all here right now, so if we're gonna have a council discussion about it, we may as well do it now or put it on the agenda for next week where there's a Rules Committee meeting. But, I mean, if the, I think it's, to the mayor's earlier point, it's a bad look to be making amendments to a budget on the night you vote on it. Sometimes they're necessary, but what is, and I, I can vote no tonight or vote to table it, so it doesn't matter, but what is the objective? Like, what different thing will we see two weeks from now that's not here tonight?
I would hope that we'd have on, on some of the items discussed tonight, more accurate figures in the budget, and as well as there are some amendments that I think should be made. So if I can ask a clarifying question of you about your question, are you suggesting that there be a meeting next Monday with rules to adopt those amendments and then vote on it ultimately December eleventh? Are you saying that final action would happen?
That's a good question. I, it depends on what the changes are, but I mean, is anybody gonna propose a drastic expense cut or a drastic revenue generator? Are we gonna revisit free beaches? Like, what are we gonna do that's gonna fundamentally change this in a way that's fair to staff who have to actually put numbers to whatever ideas we come up with? Or do you want to have that meeting next week and give staff another week to prepare it? I mean, you know, and then to Councilmember Burns, their point, and then, you know, we need to get this budget passed, but we need to focus on the 2025 budget because we're talking about stretching things out. You know, I know in our budget meeting, a lot of residents talk about the cost of insurance. That's a long process to bid it out. You know, there really isn't like a budget season. The budget is like, more like a harvest of the decisions that are made throughout the year. So putting it aside, because our priority right now is to pass this thing, but like, or not this thing, but a budget, but how are we gonna change things for next year? You know, we could talk about that, but like, what's the magic between now and the, what's the magic of holding it for two weeks? I guess it's my question of everybody, because if we're gonna table it, which I support, or if you want to put it up for a vote, I don't plan to vote for it, but what's the, like, what thing are we allowing time to have happen?
I'm hoping, one, that we just have the necessary time. I, I need more time personally with the budget. I hope to be able to have conversations with you and other colleagues, and maybe in two weeks' time, maybe you can get to a yes. Maybe there are others who are no's, that we can incorporate things into this, that will get them to a yes, or more comfortable with this budget, and that's my goal of tabling it, as well as, as I noted, making sure that our, all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
And I guess just a related question, if this does get pushed two weeks, is that creating hardship for you guys in terms of, I mean, we got till the thirty-first, but we don't want to get too close.
The only real deadline is, yeah, we have to get, obviously, all the ordinances for tax levy, because the last Tuesday is the deadline with the Cook County filing.
Okay.
So we have to have, yeah, all notarized, get signed, whatnot, yeah.
Okay, so like a two-week pause or break, whatever you call it, doesn't mess with you guys? Okay. I appreciate it.
Still, no one is asking to speak for a first crack, so we go back for a second time to Councilmember Nusma with three minutes and forty seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking to Alderman Haddad Katis, or Councilmember Haddad Katis's request for input on potentially using some of the permit fee to offset the remaining three hundred thousand dollars in the proposed levy increase. Am I framing that question correctly? And is that where we're at now with, we're, with the, with the motion that we passed earlier, the levy increase is now only three hundred thousand dollars?
Can I just recognize Luke quickly?
Just a quick clarification, and I'll let Hitesh or Clayton correct me, but we also have not dealt with the four hundred thousand on the community responder item.
Okay.
So if my math is correct, we're closer to seven or eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
Point of information.
Assuming that we want to go forward with that.
And just point of information, Art, and you, the athletic tax also isn't accounted here, and that adds potentially another six hundred thousand, because I think that's a general fund.
But the permit fee would more than, far more than compensate for that, is the point.
No, I agree, I think, but the question, the question is assuming the permit fees don't come in, I think, is, or assuming.
And the, and I'm sorry to go back to this, the, the point is that if the permit fees don't come in, then the athletic tax won't be reduced.
I don't think there's a guarantee. They may want to start demolition in, at some other point and still move wherever they're gonna move to.
And still, I could be the comfortable, yes, I got your point, that, okay, that's six hundred thousand, since we haven't touched it until the direction and the action from the Northwestern and the city council. But, yes, even if we say five million dollar, I think, you know, that would cover more than enough, like, say, six hundred thousand loss of the athletic tax, and including three hundred thousand plus four hundred, seven hundred. So, yeah, we should take care of that. But again, when we say that, that increases only for city. The library tax levy is going to move forward with some six hundred plus thousand, yes.
Right. Okay, so I'm glad I asked that question. It clarified more than I was, than, than I was asking, so you're welcome, everybody. So to speak to Councilmember Haddad Katis's direct question, I will argue against a further reduction in our property tax levy. As much as, I would love that, as a taxpayer myself, as a city council member, yeah, I'm looking at three years of zero to almost zero increase in the levy, and that is not something we can sustain on an ongoing basis. And I'm recalling conversations at the Finance and Budget Committee, and it was the, you know, the consensus of the Finance and Budget Committee that we don't try to drive down our property tax increase to zero this year, because we're just setting ourselves up for a future, much more painful increase, that's, you know, whether that's in a year or two. And, and I think that's important for us to take in, to take into consideration. I would rather take several small steps than stay still and then take one very painful big step at some point. You know, we might be saving a few bucks in 2024, but we're making our lives much more difficult in 2025 or 2026.
And while we talk about it, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned, even in, yeah, Finance and Budget Committee Chair Livingston, obviously, yeah. I mean, he talked about that, particularly when the water rate thing came up, that, yeah, we are pretty much paying the same rate as, if you consider the inflation, property tax. We looked at the numbers, and I think we had a one good slide at the Finance Budget where we show the general fund levy, general fund levy as a percentage of general fund expense. And it has continued to go down. I mean, it used to be twelve, thirteen percent of the general, now it is almost like a single digit, seven percent, yeah. So, I mean, that gives an idea of like, you know, real time, that, okay, in fact, the levy is going down, you know, to contribute toward our operation expenses.
Thanks.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first, or, oh, sorry. This time, no one's asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Ravel with four fifty left.
Well, I want to echo Councilmember Nusma's concerns, and I'm focused, I'm looking at this slide from, I guess, a, a budget presentation at the very beginning of this whole series of meetings, and showing what would happen in, what would happen in twenty, well, twenty twenty-six if we don't increase our tax, you know, the tax levy this year? What?
If we don't increase revenue.
Councilmember Ravel has the floor.
But I'm, you know, I'm, it's, it's the whole, the whole idea that we need to, we, yeah, we do need to increase revenue, but we also need to not, not whittle, I think increasing the tax levy a little bit every year is better than taking a big bite of, in two or three years' time. And I also want to echo another thing Councilmember said, Councilmember Nusma said a little while ago, which is, I mean, we have really big capital improvement needs, and I, I, I don't want to just spend all of our wonderful stadium revenues on, I, I think, you know, if we can use some of those for the capital improvement program that we're gonna increasingly be, you know, trying to, trying to fund, I think that's a really important thing to have.
Councilmember Harris.
So people understand order. I haven't spoken once, so that's where I get to go. So just wanted to bring to the attention of everyone, the things that we were applauded for were, we're now paying our staff, and that was, how much was that?
Eleven.
Increase twenty, a lot of money, lot of money. We're now funding pensions at a hundred percent. Those things cost. Those are not things that we just cut dry. They were the right things to do. They make us good citizens in the choices that we made, but they do cost. I do think some increase is important. As a taxpayer, it hurts my heart, but the reality is, that's reality. You go to McDonald's, the dollar pop is no longer a dollar. Taxes are going to rise, and if we can show the good things that we do, which I believe we're doing and have done, we have to buckle down and keep up. So I do agree with some, some increase, but it does have to be fiscally some. So thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so we go back for a third crack to Councilmember Kelly with three fifty-five left.
Thank you. So, you know, it's not about not raising taxes or about raising taxes, it's about ensuring that we aren't unnecessarily overcharging residents. And, you know, I really appreciate the work that Mr. Kennedy did. He wasn't doing that in order to cut any services. He was doing that, he was looking where we saw, you know, gross leaps in, in increases from, and you always have to refer to your actual, your last actual budget. You can't go with your adopted, because our, you know, frequently we're off by thirty or forty million. He's looking at the twenty-two budget and seeing, you know, leaps of over thirty, forty, fifty percent, in some case, over a hundred percent. And we should all, and, you know, what City Manager Stowe went over, he did admit that there were, I'm not admit, but he met with City Manager Stowe and said, out of the, you know, seventy-some items he found where there were increases of well over thirty percent from one year to the next, that, yeah, there were about twenty, twenty-one that he, that City Manager Stowe went over now, including the stamps and a few other, but there's still many more. And that's why I also would favor tabling this, when there are those kind of items. I have a lot of questions. I've been to Councilmember Sufferdin's question, I've been emailing, there's still a lot of my questions that I've emailed about that involve large sums of money, millions, that I don't under, you know, that I need to understand why we're charging that. And so it's really about that. Again, it's not about raising or lowering taxes, though it is about being sensitive that Evanston is very expensive. We don't want, we don't want to be, you know, accused of or looked at as if we're just feather bedding our budget here with all these numerous increases. You know, I have questions in here about our overall health insurance increase. That's gone from twenty-two, it's increased by over forty percent. And I have the industry averages, which are, for employers, they're five to, you know, seven point two percent. I know we've increased our employee count, so I know it will increase, and I know there is a certain increase, but forty percent, that's, you know, from seven point something million to now over eleven million from twenty-two to next year. So I would like that to come for. Our allowable loss factor, you know, we're maxing out. There's a maximum amount of five percent for your, for your debt, for your, for your debt levy, up to five percent, you can account for, and up to three percent for all other. We're at like, I think, four point eight or four point nine on our, on our debt levy, and three on the others, and we've been running a surplus in those, by overcharging on our property taxes, by, you know, going, using that, which is not, we don't have to have a three percent or five percent allowable loss added to our pension, added to our levies, but we are. And I would say maybe we should reduce that to two point five and, and four point five respectively, and save half a million dollars, because we've been coming out over the last two years, and I, and stop me if you don't know what I'm talking about, because I know it's a little esoteric, but we've, you know, it's about a million dollar surplus. We've overcharged by putting in too great of a, you know, of an allowable loss factor. So like that, I think we could bring that down. That's not cutting any service, that's just simply not overcharging our residents. So for those reasons, I would like to table this to see if we can't, you know, see if we can't pull back a little bit in some of these areas. Thank you.
Still, no one is requesting to speak for the first or second time, so we go back to Councilmember Sufferdin for a third crack with forty-five seconds left.
Okay. I guess, so that, part of that question is like, should we have a, and this is your purview as mayor, like, should we have a meeting next Monday when we're all here to, like, people submit their questions this week, or their ideas, or whatever? Next week is to answer everything, agree that this thing squared away and vote on it the following week? Is that work? And then I don't want to, or, please let me ask Luke my question after you're done.
I mean, I might get in trouble with the legal department, I think. I don't know, we need to, for only discussing something, I don't even know that we need to schedule a separate meeting. I think we can discuss the, these items in the context of the Rules Committee. Or, one lawyer seems mad about that. But, you know, I think, I guess what I would say is, if we're gonna table this until the eleventh, folks who are not currently supportive of the budget and are interested in supporting the budget should communicate their concerns, certainly. the budget should communicate their concerns, certainly by a week from today at the latest. And if folks want to do that in the context of a public meeting, I think that's a perfectly fine idea, to do it a week from tonight. If folks want to just do it in sidebar conversations with staff and in writing with staff, I think that's also a perfectly fine idea. But what I don't think is a good idea is to show up in two weeks and still be sort of like, eh, how about this idea? How about that idea? I think, I think that's where we start to put ourselves at risk of making bad choices.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm trying to avoid as well. So like, next Monday might be that, let's kick around ideas meeting, and then the following is like the, all right, we kicked around all the ideas, like, here's the budget, vote for it or don't, because like, this is it, we're doing it, this is the real deadline, we mean it. That's what you're, that's what you're suggesting?
Well, I'm suggesting two things. Number one, I think December 11th is the real deadline. I think, you know, like, will the city of Evanston sink into Lake Michigan if we have to schedule a post-December 11th special meeting to pass the budget? No, but it's really not a good practice from a number of standpoint. So I think December 11th is the final deadline, number one. But number two, I think we should, we should, whether it's a combination of this public conversation, which has been long and robust, and then sidebar conversations that occur afterwards, or this public conversation plus another one that occurs a week from today in conjunction with sidebar conversations that occur afterwards, I think we should be done with the floating ideas phase a week from today so that we don't show up on the 11th and have like a sort of philosophy seminar rather than a kind of focused discussion on what's in front of us.
Okay, so I, yeah, I am in agreement. I mean, I want, this idea hasn't been considered or this thing hasn't been talked about off the table for the 11th. So if we're going to have a meeting, I guess just confirm whether we can do it in the context of rules or whether it needs to be a special meeting, it'd just be one item for discussion, right?
Ms. Ragged, you want to weigh in on this?
Mayor Buss, I would request a special city council meeting to discuss that agenda item, so that it's outside of Rules Committee.
Okay, so that includes like a separate public comment period of 45 minutes? All right, I mean, I, I think it's important, it's kind of like the most important thing. So I would.
It's not what you said last week.
The budget? Oh, yeah, last week was very important, too, but they all run together. And then I just wanted to ask Luke about the city asset evaluation that's in process and when we might get that report and how that might inform decisions for the following year. I don't think it affects this budget.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Suffertin. We are one of four cities in the country to be participating in the GFOA incubator, putting your assets to work, being careful on that. And we expect to have a report by late February, early March, which basically identifies all of our buildings, facilities, parking garages, surface parking lots, all the assets that we own, and making recommendations on the highest and best use for those assets, which in some cases could potentially include selling, so.
Or may I ask a follow-up question? Does it also include recommendations on, I mean, will it be like, here, you should keep this, you should sell this, or would it talk about ways to increase revenue?
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. So it digs into all of that, right? Could be selling, it could be reinvesting, it could be rehabbing, it could be modifying service fees, highest and best use, whatever that might look like.
And we anticipate that in March?
Yeah, or late February, early March.
Okay, and again, if I maybe, the agenda setting is your job, but maybe we should have a meeting very shortly after that to discuss it and talk about ways that it would affect the budget season, which really needs to be all of 2024. Thanks.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a second time or a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Newsmo for a third crack with a minute 50 left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll weigh in on the process question here. I think the time has passed for the, what about this idea? What about that idea discussion? We've been going at this for two months now. If the idea is not on the table, you should have made that suggestion two months ago. What is different now than last week is this screen right here. You know, we've got some revenue coming in, but we've got some other revenue that's not going to be coming in, and it might make sense to take a minute to incorporate this latest fiscal reality into the 2024 budget. So, you know, I would be supportive of having that discussion, but not going down, you know, too many, in fact, zero rabbit holes about what about this idea? What about this other idea? We've had an opportunity to have that discussion. This is the new stuff that really should be incorporated. Thanks.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first, second, or third time, so we go back for a fourth crack to Councilmember Kelly with 50 seconds left.
Sorry. So if I did have questions about positions or off the table, is that how the, I mean, I'm just trying to understand, because I did have a question like about the tree, the new tree position, and we also have a leaf blower position.
So let me, let me.
I just want to understand how that works.
I think Councilmember Reed was making a, a technical point.
Okay.
We control the budget, and so that includes an outlay for personnel that's then divided up, as you see in the document. What we don't control is the org chart, but the draft org chart determines the draft personnel spend. So, yeah, you ultimately wouldn't amend the budget itself by saying, we're not going to have a police department anymore. You would just amend the personnel line to zero out personnel in the police department. So those questions are totally within bounds, and if you get an answer that tells you, hey, this position should be eliminated, that does generate an amendment you could make. It's just the amendment would be, let's reduce this number by this amount. It wouldn't be, let's, let's strike out this position, because the position isn't like an addendum to the budget document, and that addendum is the part that we don't control. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. So I just want to understand also process now where, so I, I mean, these are meetings. So I do bring these up at these meetings, and I brought up issues before, and it has been amended, and I appreciate that. So I'm happy to hold off on everything else. I mean, I have questions, a lot, a lot more questions. So I will, and I have submitted most of these, and I still haven't received answers to many of them. So I can either ask them now, or are we going to, should I bring them forward between now and the next, again, at the next meeting, or should we, should I just discuss some of my questions now at this meeting? I'm just trying to understand where we want to go as a council.
So, and I'll let Tesh and Clayton weigh in as well. My suggestion would be if there are additional outstanding questions or requests for information, that we could receive those in the next couple of days, frankly, so that we could then this Friday do a new round of budget memos, post that on the city website, and then share that with all of you.
Okay, so I'll send those again, are the ones that I haven't received answers yet. And then, so like tonight, for example, some positions that I have questions about, the tree position, I think that could be merged in with the, in my opinion, but it would be cut with the leaf blower position. It's hard to imagine 40 hours a week, year-round for the leaf blower or for this tree person. I just think that could be one position. And, you know, I also do have the questions about our credit card fees. We, if I, I can hold off on these, but, you know, over $850,000 in credit card fees, and I know other cities also charge, also pick up that fee, but their numbers aren't coming in that big. They're coming in at maybe $100,000. So, you know, I wonder if there's a way that we could cut back on that, whether it's having residents pay that fee when they use a credit card. But $850,000 in credit card fees is a lot.
So I will share that I did get an inquiry from Committee Member McMillan about this, and then I sent back some information about credit card. These are simply credit card fees that we absorb. If someone makes a $100 payment to the city of Evanston, we might pay 2.5% to Visa or MasterCard, right? And like most businesses, they absorb the fees. I also sent a list of municipalities that also absorb the fees to Leslie to share that with her. I think that that's the right thing to do instead of passing the fee on.
Thank you, I understand that, and I appreciate that, but you take 2% and $850,000, it's just that, for whatever reason, our city, we're picking up, we're getting hit with a huge amount.
So we do, we do tremendous volume online, and I think that might be a reflection. I don't know which other municipalities you're comparing us to, but we do.
Willmatt and Skokie.
We do a lot of business online.
So I just wonder if we might want to consider another way to handle this so that we aren't, you know, paying out so many hundreds of thousands of dollars.
For the city council, I mean, in my previous terms, this has come up a few times, and the city council was kind of unanimous that, yep, with the Northwestern young crowd and all that, we don't want to pass on these things. Why we are, our fees are higher. Generally, it ranges as the manager says, 2.5% to 3%. But some of those cost us a lot more is the water fees and parking payment, where someone makes a $3 payment, and then it costs us right there. So when you have so many transactions, we pay the transaction fee plus the interchange fee, which is a Visa, MasterCard discover. So, yeah, if you have a five transaction of a million dollar, it is a lot less expensive than the, like, 100 different transactions in the parking and water fee. So that's why, but still, yeah, I mean, I, I see overall numbers. We range around 2.5% to 3% overall, and we have, yeah, we do like almost 15 to 20 million-dollar transactions on credit card, so.
Well, it must be more, because it's, if it's 850,000 that we're paying in the fee, if it's at 2, 3%. So I know, like, when I pay my property tax, I pay an extra fee to pay with a credit card. I just wonder if we might want to reevaluate that, since our numbers are, yes, other cities do do this, but they don't, they aren't coming in anywhere near as high.
What we have done, and that's a good point, what we have done, like, say, permit fee, and sometimes the contractor say, big permit fee, say, okay, I want to pay 100,000 with the, so anything, like, this is more like an administrative thing, when it's above the 25,000, we charge that 3% fee and add it manually.
So maybe there are certain categories that we could consider where we don't pay that, pick up the.
I mean, the amount threshold could be a more logical thing, that, okay, 5, 10, 15, and again, the city council.
I think it already is lower than that. I think it already is, I think it's 5,000.
Five grand, yeah, I'm sorry.
So anyone, any transaction over 5,000, we do not permit a credit card, because we don't want to pay 2.5% on $20,000, right?
Okay, then, so you're saying anything over 5,000, the customer is paying that?
Right, which is a pretty rare transaction.
So I think we should just then, look at this, look at these, because there's 44.
Point of order, or point of information, that's not what I heard. What I heard is, not that we make the customer pay it, but that we just don't allow them to pay using a credit card or a debit card.
I mean, there are two ways, I mean, in the past where they could not do it, otherwise we would manually ask them if they are right there, and say, okay, I want to pay the credit card, we would add that, you know, 2.5% fee to that transaction, and they would end up paying the, that would be a manual. But if they pay online, like they're trying the credit card but paying online, there is no system which would allow us to add based on the $5,000 threshold.
But it just, sorry, it interrupted, also points of information.
Councilmember Kelly still has the floor there.
So, no, I mean, that would be an option, but no, I'm just suggesting that with other public offices, I pay as a customer, like with my property tax, I pay, if I want to pay with a credit card, I pay the fee. The, you know, the treasurer's office isn't paying that fee, but we are, we're paying all these fees. And again, my objection isn't so much that, you know, maybe it's a nice, it's a courtesy service, but when we're talking $850,000, I think we should be assessing, assessing, assessing this practice, because I, for some reason, it's, it's a huge portion of our, much more than other cities proportionally.
And I would just, I would just simply add that we want to encourage digital payments because there's less, we don't want to be handling cash, we don't want to be handling checks, which sometimes bounce. There's just more time involved in handling cash and checks, so we want to encourage people.
We can encourage debit cards.
Credit card payments.
Yeah, but a debit card you can use online also, so it would just be, you know, encouraging other, other types of online payments. I, I would just ask for some review of this. I, I don't think it should be this high.
I mean, it is, I mean, I have the numbers, I mean, over average volume, every month I look at the numbers kind of, and they come around anywhere between 2.5% to 3% overall. And as I said, there are, there is a fee where we pay by transaction, and all those parking payments and water payments, which are lower in the numbers but higher in the volume, that costs us a lot of money, too.
So I think we're kind of going in circles here. So, Councilmember Kelly, are you, are you done? Okay. At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or a second time, so we go back to Councilmember Hadekakis for a third crack with three minutes left.
All right, so everyone should have in their email my motion. So I will formally make a motion to amend the budget to include a $5 million placeholder for permit fee revenue and to use $392,793 towards covering the property tax levy shortfall.
Second.
So Councilmember Hadekakis moves to amend the budget to add of $5 million, $5 million in building permit fee revenue and to decrease the property tax revenue by $392,793. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
So you're, so I'm just going to, so there's a lot of people whose time are expired, some of whom continue to request to speak. Do folks want me to eliminate the constraints, or shall I continue to enforce the time constraints?
I'll suggest, as one of the folks who are out of time, eliminating it, it's the budget again. You can't really have a, have five minutes to discuss a $450 million budget.
What, what do folks prefer in terms of time constraints?
I think each motion should be five minutes.
I'm not, not, you've made your position clear. Like, someone else to weigh in, what do folks want me to do? Again, I'll just say, I'm inclined to continue enforcing the, the council rule, but again, I'm happy per the rule to follow the request of council, if council wants me to change that.
I'm one of the people, their time expired, but why don't, wouldn't this further discussion be appropriate for next Monday, and let's just vote on this? If it's going to get tabled, let's table it and move on?
That would be my recommendation, but again, I don't know if everyone else agrees with that.
Okay. Are we discuss, are we voting on this motion?
Councilmember Hadekakis, do you want to throw this motion for consideration next week, or do you want to, do you want to ask for a vote right now?
I mean, if people want to wait till next week, that's fine with me. I, it's pretty straightforward. Should be, we can do a quick yes, no, so.
I mean, I'll just, I'm sensing some discomfort up here, just because I think there's, you know, the, you know, like, an effective altruist might assign an expected value to the amount of permitting fee revenue that's going to come in and act accordingly, but like, back here in Evanston, we're going to get 0 or 10 million. We're not going to get 5 million or 7 million or, or whatever. And so I think there's some, some discomfort with acknowledging that it might not come, but also budgeting part of that number. So, so, and again, I'm just sort of like trying to feel the vibe up here, I'm not, I'm not sure. But if I'm feeling that vibe correctly, it might be better to take a week kind of talking it over and come back with a.
Sure, we can talk about it next week.
All right. So Councilmember Hadekakis withdraws the motion, and Councilmember Reed is recognized to make a motion to table.
Yes, I would like 30 seconds, though, to, before the motion. And, and I just want to highlight, again, for the folks who are not supportive of reducing the property tax levy by $300,000, there, there have been proposals to, so you, you think $300,000 in property taxes is better than $300,000 to folks who aren't Evanston residents to pay for a service that they're using when they come park at a, a city facility? So I just, you know, I, I really want us to really conceptualize what we're saying. We want to make housing in Evanston more expensive so we can ensure that, you know, Auntie Lynn or Grandma or whoever who comes to a game at Robert Crown once per year doesn't have to pay $2.50 to park. To me, that just, it's not logical, nor do I think if Evanston residents really had the option, would they say, yeah, charge me more rather than someone who's utilizing a service that is already undercharged? I will also agree with Councilmember Kelly's, I like to ask you, $800,000, that's 30 seconds. I will make the motion to table the budget to, table item SP3 to the.
Second.
Well, hold on, well, I guess table it to our next regular meeting, or table it until next Monday at a special meeting for discussion, and then from there it'll appear for action.
So my recommendation would be twofold. Fold number one, I'd recommend doing whatever you do to SP3 through SP11. And number two, I would say table it to December 11th, and if we want to have a special council meeting, I can easily put discussion items on that agenda without the table noticing it.
Okay, and then also, three members can always call for a special meeting. I will move to table items SP3, item SP4, SP5. I'm going to skip item SP6, might as well just dispatch of it. SP7, well, I guess also, do we need to table those? But I'll also table SP7, SP8, SP9, SP10, and SP11.
Councilmember Reed moves that all of the ordinances and resolutions contained in agenda items SP3, SP4, SP5, SP7, SP8, SP9, SP10, and SP11. You'll notice I did not read out the number SP6 there. You'll notice I did not read out the number SP6 there. Are tabled to the December 11th regular city council meeting. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Seeing no discussion with the clerk, please take the role on the motion to table.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hiddocattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the item is tabled to the, the items are all tabled to the December 11th regular meeting of the Evanston City Council. On item SP6, Councilmember Reed.
I'll move item SP6, ordinance 85023, Evanston Library Fund, 2023 Tax Levy.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 85-0-23. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I, I just really want to get clarification from the law department on, I know that as a municipality, we have a ministerial duty to, to forward this on to the county. I'm not clear if the state law says that this body actually has to vote on it, and how any law could mandate a yes vote from a council. And if we are mandated to vote yes, it seems that it shouldn't even come to this body, and so.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. So the City of Evanston City Code mandates that this come to the city council for approval. It gives the library board final approval of the levy, and then it just instructs the city council to move it forward. And that's included in the budget memo that finance sent out.
But does state law require, under state law, could the library board come up with a tax levy that they think is appropriate for their, for the library? And then the City of Evanston staff, the finance department, on behalf of the library just forwards that on through the normal process like we do with our tax levies? Or is there specifically a requirement in state law that this body has, has to vote on the, the tax levy? And if so, if we have to vote on it, we're mandated to vote yes?
So the city code says that you shall vote it forward, and then state law mandates that a city council is the tax levying body, not the library board. So only the city council has the ability to levy taxes. But your city code, the Evanston City Code mandates that you shall approve the tax levy that the library board passes.
That doesn't sound constitutional to me. How can any law force me to vote yes on something?
It's just the city ordinance that we have.
I'm gonna, I support the library, and please don't take this as any offense. I'm voting no today, just because I, I don't, I don't think that, I think we're doing something wrong, and I would encourage us to, to really understand it, because there could be a council that's elected at some point that just says no. And then what happens if that council says no? So I think we need to make an adjustment to our city law and really, to our city code, and really understand what our role is here, and I don't yet think we have a full understanding.
Seeing no for the discussion, with the clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hiddocattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 85-0-23 is passed. This brings us now to the consent agenda. My understanding is that item A needs to be removed, sorry, item A. Good evening. Item A8, two syllables that sound similar but are different, needs to be removed because of a change that occurred in ANPW. Now, was that change adopted? It was, okay. But nonetheless, we'll remove item A8 just for the purpose of transparency and explaining the change that already occurred. What else, if anything, would members like to see removed from the consent agenda?
A2, please.
A6, please.
And HS1, please.
At this time, I have A2, A6, A8, and HS1. Anything else?
A14 and A15.
So now the list is A2, A6, A8, A14, A15, and HS1. Anything else? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I will move the consent agenda minus the items that have been removed.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves the consent agenda except for items A2, A6, A8, A14, A15, and HS1. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Seeing no discussion, with the clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hiddocattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda with the six exceptions previously read is adopted. Now on item A2, would Councilmember Newsma care to make a motion?
I move item A2, approval of the BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card activity in the amount of $12,854.05.
Is there a second? Councilmember Newsma moves approval of the BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card activity. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Seeing no discussion, with the clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hiddocattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion carries and the credit card activity is approved. This brings us to item A6. Councilmember Newsma, would you care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I will move item A6, approval of purchasing insurance renewals, property excess liability and excess workers' compensation for fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of the purchasing insurance renewals, property excess liability and excess workers' compensation for FY 2024. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye, Stane.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hiddocattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion carries and the purchasing of insurance and renewals are approved. This brings us to item A8. Councilmember Newsma, would you care to make a motion and perhaps explain what occurred in committee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move item A8, which is Resolution 75R23, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement agreement with Northwestern University. This was amended in committee.
Second.
So this was amended in committee. I emailed council this afternoon at 1:35, and this was at the request of staff. We amended section 2E to make it clear that the entire 20-year payment is due upfront rather than in annual installments, and then we just made a clerical correction to section 6.
Councilmember Newsma moves that Resolution 75-R23 is amended in committee, and that amendment was just described, be approved. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
Yeah, one thing, so there's a 2% escalator every year, is that correct, from staff?
Yes.
Okay. And we're charging all of this upfront?
Yes.
Okay, okay. It's fine, yep, thank you.
So I just wanted to check in with Councilmember Ravel, this is in your ward, right? This, and to make sure, I just make sure there's no devil in the detail here, I know there was issues when there was the, the welcoming center with that, with, with that easement, and I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with this.
I'm not sure what easement you're mentioning with the welcome center.
Many years ago, but I just wanted to check in with you since this is in your ward to make sure that you're.
I think this is a very standard kind of easement.
Great, that's all, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, with the clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the resolution is approved. This brings us now to item A14. Councilmember Newsma, would you care to make a motion here?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A14, ordinance 97023, amending city code section 7-12-17, charges, rates, fees, and penalties.
Councilmember Newsma moves passage of ordinance 97-0-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I removed item A14 and A15, so I, I think they can move, be moved as one. My goal would be to look at our budget holistically and adopt these at the same meeting that we adopt the rest of the, the budget. I don't think there'd be harm to that, and, you know, who knows what information we, we gain over the next couple of weeks.
So are you making?
Yeah, I'm sorry, so I, I'm, well, I, I would like to make a motion for both A14 and A15 to table them to the December 11th meeting.
So we have A14 in front of, well, all right, so Councilmember Reed moves that items A14 and A15 be tabled to the November, December 11th regular meeting of the city council. Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a no vote at the moment, and I guess if this is final action, then maybe my vote doesn't matter, but I'm a no vote.
Seeing no further discussion, with the clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hiddocattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 97-0-23 is passed. Councilmember Newsma, would you care to make a motion on item A15?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A15, ordinance 105023, amending city code section 8-4-11 to revise sanitation service charges.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves passage of ordinance 105-0-23. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I can support this, you know, this isn't water, but it's just difficult. It, it's easy to support sanitation service, this is an actual service that is being provided to folks with A14, the, when we're subsidizing credit card usage by $800,000, when we're subsidizing parking and other issues by, by such a large amount, and we're not subsidizing water to the, to the same level, we're not. You know, again, A15, I think makes sense for a service fee, but we really, really implore my colleagues to think about your priorities, your values, your morals, and what are the things that you would put ahead of some of the things that we are charging for. Folks need water to live, folks don't need parking to live, folks, you know, quite frankly, don't need sanitation services at a, at a reduced rate to, to live either, and so I will support this, but we need to, to really think about our service charges. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, with the clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hiddocattis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, ordinance 105, the motion carries and ordinance 105-0-23 is passed. This brings us to item HS1. I believe Councilmember Ravel, you're the chair, would Councilmember Ravel, would you care to make a motion here?
I move adoption of ordinance 74-0-23, amending Title III, Chapter 14, to ban the sale of all flavored tobacco products.
Second. Councilmember Ravel moves passage of ordinance 74-0-23. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Reed, followed by Sufferden.
Thank you. Again, as the refer of the original ordinance, which was to ban menthol cigarettes and to ban, to ban the sale of menthol cigarettes, ban the sale of flavored e-cigarettes, I, I do think there, for me, this is hard. One, I think Councilmember Sufferden made an interesting point at our last meeting around alternative ways to enforce this. I do think the folks who came to public comment and suggested that this would increase criminal interactions with police, I, I think that was a bit misguided. Certainly, this is not, as was stated by Mr. Ziegler, this is not criminalizing the possession of these items, which I would be staunchly, staunchly against, but this is prohibiting the sale of these items. But if we're going, and, and the original purpose, why I made this referral and was supported by Councilmember Ravel and Hiddocattis, was to target the items that are causing the greatest health concern, that was flavored e-cigarettes with youth and menthol cigarettes with the black community. But if we're going to include all flavored tobacco products, why would we not just ban tobacco altogether? At that point, we're, we're saying so clearly that flavored tobacco is, is, is bad in all cases, and we're, we're saying hookah and all of these things are, are not acceptable, why would we not ban tobacco altogether? And so I, I guess I'll pose that first to our health director.
Good day. Members of City Council, I go by Director Health and Human Services Department. I think it would be a great idea to ban all, all tobacco, but in this particular reference, we are talking about flavored.
If, if I may interject, just, is there a reason why, if we, if we're supporting this, why wouldn't we just ban all tobacco?
That would be certainly encouraged, but our focus at this point is flavored tobacco and, and menthol cigarettes, as you mentioned, which are primarily targeted to, to, to the black community, and not only that, to our youth, and that's our focus.
Yeah, but we do know that specifically flavored tobacco, specifically hookah, youth, from my understanding, are smoking regular cigarettes at a higher rate than they are hookah or, you know, a number of flavored tobacco products, discounting flavored e-cigarettes. One, is that, is my understanding correct or incorrect?
We certainly see an increase in teenagers and youth smoking vape products.
Right.
E-cigarette products.
Right.
There might be an argument to make that we don't see that increase with, with hookah.
Right.
The reason why we are also pushing for all flavored tobacco is the marketing schemes and strategies that our tobacco, that tobacco companies use to entice our youth and individuals to start smoking or continue, continue to smoke. And not only that, the marketing schemes that they use also includes different types of languages that are vague, in which if you don't know what it means, you, you can assume that they are not flavored tobacco and consume it. And another point that I want to make is if we decide to segment what flavored tobacco product that we will enforce, it will create an enforcement nightmare, just based on enforcement and from that standpoint. So that's why we have encouraged and we are pushing for the ban of all flavored tobacco products.
If I can interject there, I'm not understanding what the enforcement nightmare If I can interject there, I'm not understanding what the enforcement nightmare would be. I think it's a clear delineation, there's a clear delineation between, for example, flavored e-cigarettes and other flavored tobacco products. So what would the nightmare be in regard to enforcement?
There are variations, variations. We're talking about maybe hundreds of variations of flavored tobacco, including hookah and cigars and what have you. And the language that is used in the marketing strategies of tobacco companies would make it confusing for us to enforce. So that's pretty much what I'm trying to state here.
But my thought is, if I'm an inspector in your department and I walk into a store and I see an electronic device that has a flavor associated with it, to me, that would, if we pass this version, would certainly be a violation of the law. If we were to amend this or change this and not include hookah or other flavored tobacco products that aren't e-cigarettes, if I walk in and I see there's, you know, a flavored other tobacco product that actually, that's not an e-cigarette, I think that's a pretty clear delineation between the two.
And as I say, I get where you're heading, and as I stated, when it comes to these items, it might be confusing for us to enforce, just given the vague language that tobacco companies use in labeling these products.
And we allow flavored, right, flavored alcohol, alcoholic products, correct?
I believe the conversation is focused on tobacco.
I know, but I'm just asking, currently, under, maybe attorney rugby, under the law, we currently allow flavored alcoholic, you know, you can make a flavored alcoholic drink and sell it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so I, I'm just... Also, I haven't seen ads for tobacco in quite a while. I don't know if I've ever seen an ad for tobacco in my life. Maybe I'm young enough to have been born after that point. I've only seen anti ads. I think that, you know, I personally support banning e-flavored cigarettes and menthol cigarettes. There's a clear, a very clear line between their usage and the harm to marginalized communities and young folks. When you move into the realm of all flavored tobacco products, at that point, you know, I just can't logically say that it makes sense just to ban those and not ban everything. At that point, I think we just need to ban all tobacco in the city, and so I would, if we're going that route, I would be supportive of banning all tobacco, or, you know, if we're not going that route, I think we need to make sensible amendments here that will allow us to, you know, more effectively and surgically get at the problem that we are actually trying to solve. And I don't think that this particular ordinance that I supported, you know, bringing this up in the first place, I don't think we'd be having a discussion about banning any flavored tobacco or not flavored, you know, had there not been the initial introduction of this, and so I think this is a worthwhile discussion, but I do think we need to be more surgical, so I'm going to move to table this to our December eleventh meeting for further discussion. Also, and just very last point, is, you know, I have met, I've met with the advocates on this. I've met with, I hate to say this, more tobacco lobbyists than I ever thought I would meet with, and I met with every, and I didn't get an opportunity to meet with the folks, and I do value, as I hope was demonstrated even with the Northwestern Project, taking the time to meet with anyone who wants to meet. I just was not able to make it the one day, and I would love to hear their feedback, and I'd love to continue to hear feedback from the advocates. I've listened to every side. I'd love the opportunity to continue that, and so I would ask that we table this for one meeting to allow that and to make sure that we're being as surgical as we can to make sure that we're getting at the root issue here. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that ordinance seventy, the item HS one be tabled to the December eleventh, regular meeting of City Council. Councilmember Suffredin seconds. I will stop cutting the throng. This is a non-debatable motion, so will the clerk please take the roll and the motion to table?
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Suffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye, and we skipped with councilmember.
Councilmember Herakakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
With two voting in favor and seven voting against, the motion fails. Councilmember Suffredin, followed by Ravel.
Yeah, I was just gonna note, there is a process issue with the head of the Illinois Fuel and Retail Association traveling to Evanston for meetings, them not happening, and then us voting on it. I think, and it's not gonna change anybody's vote, but he represents the actual retailers in Evanston who are selling his product. I think when we're regulating business, we should hear him out. I mean, I don't disagree with anything you said, Ike, I mean, other than, I don't think that tobacco's been marketed since the nineties, but whatever. But I think the big thing is, like, you know, and Mr. Sharp represents the retailers in Evanston, and he'll likely also weigh in on our motor fuel tax proposal, but, and again, I don't know the specifics of any particular business, but we're looking at a double hit to those businesses potentially. I think we should just understand what we're doing to the Evanston retailers and then make an informed vote. So I think it would be appropriate to hold it. I, you know, I talked to Lauren, I get it, vote for it tonight, we want to be the first, we want to, you know, create momentum for other jurisdictions, but I just think it's a bad move to do something that directly affects a category of businesses and not meet with the trade organization representing those businesses.
Councilmember Ravel, followed by Kelly.
Well, I do regret that that meeting didn't take place. I guess I feel we've spent a lot of weeks talking about this, both in human services and then again here at City Council, and heard from many, many really strong advocates for this ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products. Both people speaking from their own personal experience, but then from a lot of, a lot of our health organizations. And I know it did start out for being flavored e-cigarettes and menthol flavored cigarettes, but, and I think the main reason we were pushing those, pushing that approach was to, to try to address the issue of, you know, smoking, using these products by our young people. And so I guess one thing that convinced me that expanding it to cover all flavored tobacco products was reading that, so the sale of cigars has more than doubled and largely driven by the increased sales of small types of cigars, many of which are flavored, and these flavored products, these flavored little bitty cigars, are the second most popular tobacco product among youth after e-cigarettes. So it's, tobacco is a really devious product, and there are, continue to be ways to find more avenues to appeal to our young people, and so I strongly urge us to go, move forward and approve this ordinance this evening.
Just before we go on, in the interest of broadcasting Josh Sharp's calendar, I've spoken with him on the phone several times when he was in town for the meeting that got canceled. He reached out to me and I was able to make time in my schedule and met with him in person here in Evanston. So it is, I'm sure, a disappointment that any one particular connection wasn't made, but his view certainly has been heard, at least by me, and I would guess by others up here as well. Councilmember Kelly?
So I am, you know, the first to say we need to hear from stakeholders. I support the ban. You don't need to convince me, but I do think it's important that we, as a council, you know, are hearing from all relevant stakeholders so that we fully understand where we're going when we make a decision. And again, you don't have to convince me on the issues with this, but, you know, as someone who just now voted in favor on the, on the side, on the favorable side, I'd like to bring it back for reconsideration for a table.
So I'm gonna need some help. So am I right here that what needs to happen is that Councilmember Kelly, who just voted on the prevailing side against the motion to table, would first make a motion to reconsider? If that motion carries, then there would be another vote on the table? Is that right?
Point of order, I think you could just make a motion to table and skip the reconsideration.
I think that's right. Is a motion to table renewable?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you can, you can do that if you want, but you can skip the extra step and just make a motion to table.
Then I'll, then I'll motion to table. Again, I just think, with everything that we do, we have to be careful, and we've made many mistakes in the past by not incorporating those voices, so whether I'm for or against it, I would want to adhere to that process, so I'd like to motion to table this as previously requested.
Councilmember Kelly moves to table this to December eleventh. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Councilmember Reed?
One of us, both of us.
All right, so Councilmember Kelly moves to table item HS one to the December eleventh, regular meeting of the City Council. Councilmember Reed, let's say, seconds. Again, it's a non-debatable motion, but the clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Suffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
With three voting in favor and six voting against, the motion fails and the item is not tabled. The only light at this time is Councilmember Reed. Your time is up. Can you...
Just very quick, I want to make an amendment here. One, if I can have thirty seconds, and then I'll make a motion.
Please just make the motion.
I would move that we ban all tobacco products, the sale of all tobacco products in our city. If we're gonna go, if we're gonna make this step and we're gonna, we might as well make the full measure, and so I move the ban of all tobacco products in the city of Evanston.
Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. And now, seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on item HS one, which has not been amended?
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffredin?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries and ordinance seventy-four dash oh dash twenty-three is passed. This brings us now to call of the wards. Councilmember Harris?
No report.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, the next third ward office hours are Thursday, December seventh, at Brothers Cave from seven thirty till ten, till nine thirty. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Margarita Inn Community Advisory Council will meet tomorrow, seven PM, at the Margarita Inn. And then in next week, in another week, the fourth ward meeting will be held Tuesday, December fifth, seven PM, at Robert Crown. And fourth ward office hours are Saturday, December ninth, from ten to noon, at a very special location. This is the Evanston-made pop-up holiday market at sixteen thirty-one Chicago. Assuming Councilmember Kelly will welcome us into the first ward, this is at the former Found Restaurant.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, just want to say to the last vote, you know, I, you know, voted in the way that I would love to see, you know, Cook County, the federal government, et cetera, take up the issue of tobacco, flavored tobacco or otherwise. You know, just speaking bluntly, you know, menthol cigarettes and I think the flavored tobacco products that even Councilmember Ravel was talking about are used by the African-American, I don't know predominantly, but certainly significantly. But when I think about, but then when I go the next mental jump and say, but is that a good thing? You know, it's not, whether, you know, and again, we know people consume this. I think people can, obviously, can make their own decisions about whether or not they want to use it, but when I tried to make the next mental jump is, on whether or not that was a good thing, and I would want to continue to see people use those products as much as they are. I think the obvious answer for me was no. Do I think that people will decide to go to Skokie in Chicago to get those products? Yes. Do I believe that there will be an increase in loose cigarettes or the illegal sale of cigarettes? Yes. I think that point was missed. They're not talking about, you know, the possession of tobacco products being now illegal. What they're saying is that there's already a market, an illegal market that exists, to sell loose cigarettes, single cigarettes, because cigarettes are already high, you know, cost a lot in Evanston and the surrounding area. But, and that this will expand that illegal market, and I believe it will. And how we deal with that, I'll be taking a, you know, paying close attention to, but I think the reality is, I couldn't get myself, I couldn't think of a reason why it's not a good idea to try to discourage people from, from doing something that is not good for their health ultimately. So I decided to support this. Other than that, no other news from the fifth ward. Thank you.
Councilmember Ravel?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes, eighth ward, ward meeting this Thursday at six PM at the Robert Crown Center. We'll have, I'm forgetting the gentleman's name, hopefully he doesn't watch, ward meeting, or council meeting is at ten o'clock at night, but we're having a mammalogist from the Field Museum come in to talk about rats, and I believe we'll have a representative from the Health Department as well. We recently had a rat walk in the eighth ward that I got from my colleague in the second ward, and I think it was a fruitful discussion, and residents want to hear more. We'll also have Commissioner Josina Marita, I should have maybe said that first. Commissioner Josina Marita will also be at our ward meeting to discuss her tenure as county commissioner and the happenings in the county, and so I invite my colleagues and folks out to that as well. And then we will, I guess, we'll probably talk budget and other items, so I invite folks to join the ward meeting. I too, I just very, in thirty seconds, want to say that the reason I voted no tonight for the tobacco ordinance is shared, is the concern that Councilmember Burns raised, as well as others, that, you know, if we're gonna make the measure, we should go the full measure, but also understanding that if we could be putting folks in a new harms way, and I hope that our police department handles those situations as delicately as possible, because I don't believe that was the intention of this body, to create further opportunities for negative interactions with our community. And then also, I'll just say to my colleagues who, for items that, when it comes to workers receiving better working conditions, are always willing to hear out the business community and table things and hold things, or whether it's, you know, just cause eviction ordinances, whenever it's the folks, you know, we typically are willing to hold conversations, to hear those folks out. I don't, you know, I'm not always enthusiastic about it, but I engage in it. And I think that, I don't know why we didn't take that pause for the tobacco issue. It's been our standard. I don't think there was a rush to do this, and so, you know, I hope that, you know, when we, in the future, when we see an issue that we know is a problem, that we know is causing harm to people in our community like this issue, that we have, we keep the same energy, and damned be the people in power, damned be the business owners, damned be the property owners. Let's just move forward with the thing that we think is right, because, because we think it's right, rather than hearing out all sides. If that's the new norm, I hope we keep it across the board.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Now, seeing nothing further to come before this body, the November twenty-seventh meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned.